The Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice this meeting was provided to the day of the record and/or star letter of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the Bolton Board of the Board of Education Office and at each school, uh, each of the school buildings in the district. Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Capello.
Here.
Mrs. Lindsay.
Here.
Mr. Kinnon.
Here.
Mr. Duarte.
Mr. Duarte is, uh, out and he apologized for not being able to be here tonight.
Mrs. Deluna.
Here.
And Mr. McAlone.
Here.
We could rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation, under God, indivisible, sovereign and just.
So, uh, today, I think we get to do one of the things that the board actually likes to do, which is to acknowledge some of our students, uh, specifically some from Lake School, or Lakeview, excuse me, uh, for a One School, One Book, uh, presentation that we've got here. Mr. Scala, do you believe?
First, I'd like to, uh, apologize to Mrs. Basely. She wished to be here, but she did not tonight. Um, and I'd like to introduce Mrs. Heising, our library media specialist. Excellent teacher. Really brought this to our school and just made it, uh, amazing, Mrs. Heising.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to share this program with you.
Um, at the end of my presentation, I will be inviting, um, a few students up and these students each represent the different grade levels at Lakeview School. Um, we would have liked to invited everybody because this program really involves everyone in our building, but that just wouldn't be possible. So I thank those that are here tonight to share with us. Um, just to tell you a little bit, I'm sorry. I'm not sure. Mr. Wilson, do you have a?
Oh, yeah. There's the aim it at the computer over there.
Okay. Um, just to give you a little background information on what One School, One Book is, it is a program that was started by an organization called Read To Them. And the whole premise of the program is to really bring enjoyment to reading to students of all ages. It's community building, um, because it's meant for everyone in the school to participate from at home to specialists to all grade levels. Um, it's done in a couple different ways. This was our first year doing the program, so we started very simply by keeping it in the school. Other districts do it where they brought, bring it to the homes of the families of the students, but for our first year, we kept it within our school. But, um, thankfully and wonderfully, it trickled into the homes as well. Last year, um, I brought this idea to Mrs. Basely and Mr. Scala and they were very receptive to, um, being a part of it. So we put together a small committee of teachers and I wanted to recognize those teachers today because I stand before you presenting, but this really was a team effort. Um, the teachers all came together at last year, started to talk about this program, started to brainstorm of what book we would like to use because One Book is what the whole program is centered around. Um, and we chose The Lemonade War by Jacqueline Davies. Um, The Lemonade War, just to give you a little background of the story, is a story of a brother and a sister who are in two different grades, who normally get along very well with one another, but at the end of one summer where they normally have a lemonade sale together, they're not quite seeing eye to eye and they decide that they want to run their own businesses and they turn it into a contest. And the contest is to see who can raise the most money at the end of a week and whoever does gets to win all of the profits. So, the book really lent itself to a lot of different topics to discuss. Economics, um, relationships, um, talking about businesses, community, um, a lot of character building was brought into discussing this book. And fortunately, with the help of our PTA, um, and I recognized our, our Author Day Committee, we were also able to invite the author Jacqueline Davies to Lakeview School. Um, she was supposed to come in January, but, um, lives in the Boston area and is still digging out. So she is planning to be here, um, toward the end of May. So we have rescheduled. She is still planning to come and the students are definitely looking forward to her visit in warmer weather. Um, at the beginning of this school year, um, we purchased one copy of the book for every classroom teacher, along with a copy of the book and, um, a packet of resources, of activities, and, um, links of suggested, suggested topics to discuss, and of course a nice glass of lemonade. We pitched this at a faculty meeting and, um, as always at Lakeview, everyone was very supportive, very excited and very on board. Um, so we got the teachers ready to go. We needed to get the students ready. So in October, we started the very first week, just introducing the book, introducing the program to them, and we started to share some of the things that were going to be happening throughout the school year related back to the story of Lemonade War. Um, during the second week, um, the PTA was having their ice cream social, as they always do, and they were kind enough to allow us to have our very own lemonade sale. What we decided as a school in conjunction with reading the book was that we too would have a lemonade sale. We weren't turning it into a war or a contest. We wanted to make it something that was very positive. So we decided to have a series of lemonade sales throughout the year where we raise, we're gonna raise money and at the end of the year, it's going to be donated to Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation, um, as part of our project. And then in the third week of October, all of the classes began reading and the classes all stayed on the same schedule of reading the book. So if you were a kindergartner or a fifth grader, you all had the opportunity to discuss the book because you were all at the same point in the book. And we did school building activities throughout the book as well, so everyone was able to participate because they were all at the same point in the reading. So, just a little, uh, wordle of all the different discussions that came about, all the activities that came about, um, and of course, um, some of the exciting things that the students did, um, throughout the months while we were reading the, um, the book. Um, we've had two Lakeview lemonade sales so far. We have three more planned between now and the end of the school year. Um, and I, when I have some of the students, uh, come up, they'll share with you how much money we've raised already, um, to, to date. Um, but all of the proceeds will be going to Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation in June. Um, in May, when the author comes as well, she's meeting with all of the grade levels and for each of the grade levels, she's gonna be presenting something different with them. Um, she has other books. The Lemonade War actually is the first book in a series. Um, The Lemonade Crime is the one that follows and many of the students have shared an interest in reading that and have read it. So she'll be talking to some of the older classes about the whole series. Um, and then something that's extra special, um, for our fifth grade classes, in addition to presenting to them, she's also going to be meeting with each fifth grade class and doing a writing workshop with them. And the writing workshop is the plot thickens. So she'll be talking a lot more about them about building up their writing. And now I would like to invite some of my friends to come up and share. So you could stand right in front of her. You, Mackenzie and Abigail, Juliana.
Mrs. Heising, we actually have a camera that we film all of our meetings and actually get posted on YouTube. Just, you wanna watch your kids later on YouTube. So, I don't know if we wanna position the, uh, the kids so that they can get some screen on.
Okay, so we'll, we'll slide over here. Slide right in front of us for the audio.
We'll get out of the way to give them.
Ryan, we'll have you start. Um, I do apologize, two of our friends felt ill today. So Mr. Scala has been kind enough.
And I will be playing the other.
So Ryan, why don't you start?
Okay.
Hi, I'm Charles, well, I'm with daddy.
One of the main characters in the book, Jessie, um, throughout the book references her favorite book that she's reading over the summer, which happens to be Charlotte's Butt. So the kindergartner classes were really excited about wanting to read that book next and some of them took it upon themselves to do so at home. Mackenzie?
My sister and I shared our favorite parts from the book.
And Abigail is here as well, Mackenzie's sister. She's in fifth grade. Juliana?
I was selected to speak with Jacqueline Davies when she comes in May.
So we can have a little Q and A session for our fourth graders.
So far, we raised almost nine hundred dollars from our lemonade sales.
And we have three more to go. And then, um, Jack's class, who's in our third grade class, created trivia questions that were read over the morning announcements. And we did that throughout the entire book, along with, um, sharing key vocab words from each chapter that was being read that week as well. And then we have one last part that we would like to share. Excuse me, Ms. Abigail.
Lemon drops are given to anyone at Lakeview School who has performed an act of kindness or works to make a difference. We would like to express our appreciation for all of your hard work and support of us at Lakeview School by giving you a lemon drop, note and a gift. The bracelet says, kindness matters at Lakeview School. Please wear it with pride. I know you do.
So every year, our guidance counselors, um, initiate a program where we try to bring positive, um, cheer to the children that do something well at our school or help others. And in the years, it's been, um, notes in a bucket, but this year, we did lemon drops in conjunction again with our book. So we have a lemon drop for each of you. Do you have to pass them out? Mr. McAlone?
Mr. Tony?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have little certificates to hand out too. Uh, who am I? Give me a hand.
Abigail?
Abigail.
Mackenzie?
Mackenzie.
Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for doing.
Thank you. I'll tell you that my son goes to Lakeview, um, since the beginning of the year, he's wanted to do a lemonade stand in Cleveland, Alaska. So, my wife and I, we, uh, used the idea of lemonade stands and learned. That was great. I appreciate that. So, I know we have, uh, some families in. We're gonna be talking about a couple more things, uh, some of which will be very, very important to you, but obviously, uh, so if you feel like you need to take a kid, please don't hesitate. Um, we are gonna be talking next about the old board office that we have on, uh, Openaki Road. Uh, I'm gonna pass this over to Steve, uh, to go through a presentation that he's put on, uh, to give us, I think, the entire public, including the boards, some information, um, on where the board office has been, where it is today, and potentially where it may be in the future. Uh, what I would want to do is allow him to give his presentation. Uh, I wanna open up to the public. If you wanna come up and, and give your opinion or, or comment, please feel free. We do have some rules that I'll, I'll think about later and I'll allow the board to ask you questions after that. So, Steve, if you're ready?
I don't know. Am I ready?
Yeah, we shut the projector up.
Nice. So we're waiting for the projector to come back on so I can go through this, uh, presentation we put together. It's not very long. It's just a short presentation based on, um, what the current status of the building is right now. And, um, those of you that know, the, the Board of Education owns property. It's at 501 Openaki Road, which is right where the, um, what is that, Union and Openaki, I guess. It's not, uh, Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant and, yeah, Mount Pleasant and Openaki. It's across from the old church that's been there for a long time and if you've driven by it recently or in the last few years, you can tell if you look closely or maybe not even that closely, that's not in great condition. Back about five years ago, pretty close to right around now, the, um, the Board of Education Office was removed out of that site due to the fact that we had, um, contaminants and there was a, um, there's mold, it was leaking, there was a small fire and it wasn't, it wasn't really, um, okay for human habitation. And so, here, here's just some, some facts we have here. Um, so, historical records show that the building was built in nineteen oh nine. I, I put the second thing up there because if you Google it and look at the tax records, it says it was built in nineteen forty. So, we have letters and evidence that says it was built in nineteen oh nine. It was abandoned by the Board of Education in twenty ten. The land size is close to an acre, point eight five acres. The building is one story and it's fifteen hundred fifty-four square feet. There is a bathroom up a half a flight of stairs, but it's still classified as a one story building. The area is zoned for residential use and our tax assessor value, we don't pay taxes because we're a public school, but the value of the land, if it was being taxed, would be a hundred and forty-two thousand and a hundred and twenty-one thousand for the building. For a total of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So, we have, we have what's called an architect of record and the architect of record is approved every year by the Board of Education. The firm that we use is called DeCarr and Rabino. They're out of Wayne. They do a lot of school districts. We asked them to do this for us, to put this together. We have, a district has to have something called Long Range Facilities Plan. This is part of our Long Range Facilities Plan. In order for us to rehabilitate the building as is, meaning leaving it where it is, not knocking it down and starting over, but actually rebuilding, rehabilitating it, again, these are cost estimates from our architect of record. And remember, this cost, this includes bringing in a code to today's code for handicap accessibility and all the other building codes, the fire codes, everything has to be in line. So, the, the cost according to our architect is one point five million dollars. That would include a small, a small addition for the bathrooms because of the fact, if you've ever been in this building, the women's bathroom is downstairs, a half a flight of stairs and the men's bathroom is up a half a flight of stairs. So to bring it into compliance for ADA, to actually rehabilitate that and bring it onto one floor and, or put an elevator would be more costly, costly than putting a little addition for the bathrooms. So this one point five million dollars includes a small addition for the bathrooms, but we'd still have approximately fifteen hundred square feet of space. If we were going to knock the building down and start over again, the cost of the building to do that would be about two point one million dollars for thirty-five hundred square feet. Now again, these are estimates from our architect, not from Steve Forte, but from the people who do this. You gotta remember, when we, when we do things as a public entity, there are many more rules than there are for residential use. Prevailing wages. We have to, we have to use prevailing wages. Any, any, any and all things that have to do with fire prevention, that has to be in there. All handicap accessibility laws, all that stuff, it all has to be included there. So the costs are substantially more. The demolition of the building, if we were just to demolish the building and leave it, leave the property as is, would be ninety-seven thousand five hundred. Again, a cost estimate from DeCarr and Rabino. The reason why that number is, is high as it is is due to the fact that there is, um, there, there are contaminants in the building. So there, that would have to be remediated, like removal of asbestos, there's molds and other contaminants. We're also dealing with, um, with an oil spill that occurred a few years ago, but the good news is we just got approved, we just got a letter from the, um, actually just an email. We don't have the official letter yet, but we did get, notice that the environmental problem from the oil is cleared up. So that's good news. So here's, here's what we currently have. We have, we have an, we have office space that we've rented at four hundred Morris Avenue, which is right by eighty-four lumber, out on the outside of town there. This is for the central office. So we have, my office is there, the bill, the business office is there, the curriculum office is there, and so is, uh, so are the special ed staff, all in that space. We also have some storage there in the basement, eight hundred square feet. School boards, like other public entities, are required to save many documents forever, a hundred years. So for students, student documents, we have to save for a hundred years. Personnel documents, there's a, there's a long time, it's not a hundred years, but it's a long time. Board minutes is like a hundred years again too?
Forever.
Forever. So board, so some of these things are, are items that we, we don't, we're not permitted to, to discard. So, we have to have that space. One of the things that happened when we got, when I, when I came here in July, was that I realized that, that that building is really in bad shape, but all these sensitive documents were just laying there. So what we did was, we talked to our, our landlord and we got him to rent us some space in the basement that was climate controlled because there's no heat in this building right now and we don't, we can't have mold and we have to keep it in better condition. So, we moved all of our sensitive documents from, from, um, five oh one Openaki and put it in the basement at four hundred Morris. And, and we filled up the space fairly nice, so we have, it's a pretty organized area and it's much more usable. Now, we don't look too much at somebody, student records that, that went to school here eighty years ago. I mean, we almost never do. But we do look at building plans. Um, we do look at things like, um, personnel records from five years ago, maybe if a person calls up and needs something. So, so some of the stuff we do need, it's not just like we have to save it, but we actually do access it. And our Board of Ed does own property on Lakeview School. There's about three and a half acres of property that if you, if you know the school, the, um, where the pastor is that gets you out the birch run, on the left, there's property there that we could build an office building on if we wanted to. We also have space at Valley View where the, where the current, um, trailers for the school students are. And the Board of Ed also owns a thirty acre tract on Nicole Drive on the other side of Route ten. So, the cost to maintain the building each year while it's abandoned is approximately three thousand dollars a year. That includes cutting the grass, paying for this, a small amount of electricity, there's a phone bill, we do, we do plow the, the area, there's some insurance, there's, there's minor costs. It's not, it's not excessive, but it is something that we should think about since four years, five years have already gone by and we've spent three thousand dollars a year, so it's added up to fifteen thousand dollars. And we've also realized that, um, we're, that the internet service going to the office is expensive, so we've had to cut that. So if you add those kinds of facts in, it, it can be expensive. Oops. So this is the state of what the front entrance looks like right now. The, the, um, the masonry stairs going into the, into the office. This is the back corner, the southwest corner. Um, this right here, this, this area right here is pretty, pretty shot and, uh, people are throwing things in there now. We found some, some, uh, alcohol bottles and things like that that people are throwing through the, through the back. So we, we have to do something. Um, these stairs and just the condition of the foundation there, she sees that. There's a set of stairs that was over there, but they got moved and now they don't go to anything. Uh, this is what the basement looks like. So it's not a great picture. It's hard to get a picture of this, but, um, there's, the problem is right here, there's a lot of water damage. So the water comes into the basement and we, we never were able to remediate that. So, instead of, instead of remediating and stopping the water from coming in the building, what, what was done here was they built a small platform of wood so that things were on top of the platform, but the problem is the water's underneath, so you can imagine there's mold. So if you go in there, you can see the black mold and things on the, on the building, on the room. There's another picture of that room. So, this doesn't look horrible, but it shows that they're not up to ADA compliance. This would all have to be brought up to ADA compliance. These are original. They also have the original type of water that, that goes in. It flushes, the way it flushes is not energy, it doesn't conserve water. This is one of the offices there, so it, it, it just has a lot of junk left in there, but we got all the sensitive documents out. And here's one more picture of the office building. Then we have time for the discussion. If, um, I don't know if any of the board members have a question before we open it up to the public?
And, uh, it probably was worth noting that some of the board members were able to go up on, actually yesterday, right?
Yeah.
On Sunday, right, to take a look at the, uh, I guess it's been a few years and maybe some folks sat in there just to take another look at it. So some of the board members have seen it, I guess, recently as well.
Much as yesterday. Do you wanna open up to public comment at this time?
Yeah, but good. Uh, so obviously, uh, you know, there's a reason why we invited public comment. It's not just a board decision, this is a community decision. Uh, we have a couple of rules, uh, which would be to shoot out the state name and your address for the record. Um, as a reminder, the board, board meetings are recorded. Um, you have a maximum of three minutes to, uh, state your opinions or ask questions. Uh, Steve and I, Steve or I can answer those questions for you or try to at least, uh, but certainly your opinions, your recommendations, your thoughts. Your opinions are welcome. So, the, we'll open up to the vote, please.
Okay. My name's Charles Body. I live at seventy-three Mount Pleasant Turnpike in Denville, which is just a few, uh, houses down the street from the building. So I've been familiar with this building for probably thirty or forty years that I've lived there. Um, what are you paying for rent in your current facility?
A rent right now for everything is in the range of fifty thousand dollars.
A year?
Per year.
The, uh, the present, the old building, uh, is it considered two stories or is it considered, your offices were on the whatever floor you call that and then it was a basement?
There's a basement and there's a, like a half a flight of stairs to go up to the men's room, but it's, it's classified as a one story structure with a basement.
So is the square footage that is listed, is that just the one story or is that the one story plus the basement, do you know?
I don't, I, I, I believe it's the one story due to the fact that it's not a finished basement, so I don't think that the, I don't think the architect would have included that.
So you're, um, is a sign on it possible hazardous remediation to be, uh, prepared in the future or something? And where would that, how you address that as part of what you just said today, your oil has been taken care, is that correct?
The LRSP sign that's, that's up there from the DEP, that, that will be removed soon because we, we were given a, a preliminary clearance that, that the oil situation is resolved. That's the main environmental concern right now.
And that was like a leaking oil tank or something?
You know what? It was, it was well before I got here. I, I don't know, I don't know specifics. I know it was an oil problem. I think it had to do with the tank.
I could check, cause I found it kind of fascinating. So you saw in his presentation, it was nineteen oh nine and then nineteen forty, where there were two oil tanks and we didn't discover it until we were looking at the first one. It was undocumented by the town records. I mean, I found it fascinating, actually. So when we were like digging, we just kept digging and testing and digging.
Okay, and then you found another one. Okay. Um, the inherent problem of the building is the roofing?
I don't see evidence of that.
So it's somehow water is getting in through the walls.
Either through the walls or maybe through the floor to hydrostatic press or something like that.
And you did try some kind of remediation to, uh, alleviate that?
These would, these would have been things before me, so I don't know. I, I can only tell you what I've seen was that they built a platform to, to raise.
And there are sump pumps that work under that platform or something to pump the water out?
There, there's, I saw a sump pump. There was one sump pump in the, in the building.
Yeah, if I can add, add in on that, the, uh, the foundation's cracked and the, uh, building was originally abandoned back in two thousand and ten because we had a puff back and fire with the furnace, uh, as well as the, uh, water damage and it became unsafe for the staff to, to, to stay there.
So the furnace had a, um, backfire essentially?
Yeah, yeah, puff back, it was so long ago, yeah. But we, in fact, I think it was, there was a fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was a fire there too. Uh, extensive smoke damage to the building and there was remediation done after that. And there was mold damage and they said, well, the building's okay if you keep the windows open. So, uh, you know, the, the prudent thing to do was to get everybody, uh, everybody out there.
And what's your schedule for making this thing?
So, the, uh, anticipated schedule would be that tonight, obviously, we wanted to, uh, hear from the public. Um, I think by the second meeting in March, we'd like to have a preliminary vote on what the board would like to do in terms of the property, uh, going forward. So hopefully by the end of next month, we should have a vote.
Originally, I saw in a newspaper that you were going to make a decision called Doom.
Yeah, we, originally, we tried to do that. That probably wasn't as ambitious.
Outside of town there. This is for the central office, so we have my office is there, the business office is there, the curriculum office is there, and so is the special ed staff, all in that space. We also have some storage there in the basement, eight hundred square feet. School boards, like other public entities, are required to save many documents forever, a hundred years. So for students, student documents, we have to save for a hundred years. Personnel documents, there's a long time, it's not a hundred years, but it's a long time. Board minutes is like a hundred years again, too?
Forever.
Forever. So some of these things are items that we don't, we're not permitted to discard, so we have to have that space. One of the things that happened when we got, when I came here in July, was that I realized that that building is really in bad shape, but all these sensitive documents were just laying there. So what we did was, we talked to our landlord, and we got him to rent us some space in the basement that was climate controlled, because there's no heat in this building right now, and we don't, we can't have mold, and we have to keep it in better condition. So we moved all of our sensitive documents from five oh one Open Aki and put it in the basement at four hundred Morris, and we filled up the space fairly nice, so we have, it's a pretty organized area, and it's much more usable. Now, we don't look too much at somebody, student records that went to school here eighty years ago, I mean, we almost never do. But we do look at building plans, we do look at things like personnel records from five years ago, maybe, if a person calls up and needs something. So some of the stuff we do need, it's not just like we have to save it, but we actually do access it. And our board of ed does own property on Lakeview School. There's about three and a half acres of property that, if you know the school, where the pastor is that gets you out the porch run, on the left, there's property there that we could build an office building on if we wanted to. We also have space at Valley View where the current trailers for the school students are. And the board of ed also owns a thirty acre tract on Nicole Drive on the other side of Route ten. So the cost to maintain the building each year while it's abandoned is approximately three thousand dollars a year. That includes cutting the grass, paying for this, a small amount of electricity, there's a phone bill, we do plow the area, there's some insurance, there's minor costs, it's not excessive, but it is something that we should think about, since four years, five years have already gone by, and we've spent three thousand dollars a year, so it's added up to fifteen thousand dollars. And we've also realized that the internet service going to the office is expensive, so we've had to cut that. So if you add those kinds of facts in, it can be expensive. So this is the state of what the front entrance looks like right now, the masonry stairs going into the office. This is the back corner, the southwest corner. This right here, this area right here is pretty shot, and people are throwing things in there now. We found some alcohol bottles and things like that that people are throwing through the back, so we have to do something. These stairs, and just the condition of the foundation there, she sees that. There's a set of stairs that was over there, but they got moved, and now they don't go to anything. This is what the basement looks like, so it's not a great picture, it's hard to get a picture of this, but there's, the problem is, right here, there's a lot of water damage. So the water comes into the basement, and we never were able to remediate that, so instead of remediating, stopping the water from coming in the building, what was done here was they built a small platform of wood, so that things were on top of the platform, but the problem is the water's underneath, so you can imagine there's mold. So if you go in there, you can see the black mold and things on the building, on the room. There's another picture of that room. So this doesn't look horrible, but it shows that they're not up to ADA compliance. This would all have to be brought up to ADA compliance. These are original, they also have the original type of water that goes in, it flushes, the way it flushes is not energy, it doesn't conserve water. This is one of the offices there, so it just has a lot of junk left in there, but we got all the sensitive documents out. And here's one more picture of the office building. Then we have time for discussion. If, I don't know if any of the board members have a question before we open it up to the public?
It probably was worth noting that some of the board members were able to go on, actually yesterday, right?
Yeah.
On Sunday, right, to take a look at the, I guess it's been a few years, and maybe some folks sat in there just to take another look at it, so some of the board members have seen it, I guess recently as well.
Much as yesterday. Do you want to open up to public comment at this time?
Yeah, good. So obviously, you know, there's a reason why we invited public comment, it's not just a board decision, this is a community decision. We've got a couple of rules, which would be to shoot out the state name and address for the record. As a reminder, the board meetings are recorded. You have a maximum of three minutes to state your opinions or ask questions. Steve and I, Steve or I can answer those questions for you, or try to at least, but certainly your opinions, your recommendations, your thoughts, your opinions are welcome. So we'll open up to the vote, please.
My name's Charles Body, I live at seventy-three Mount Pleasant Turnpike in Denville, which is just a few houses down the street from the building. So I've been familiar with this building for probably thirty or forty years that I've lived there. What are you paying for rent in your current facility?
A rent right now for everything is in the range of fifty thousand dollars.
A year?
Per year.
The present, the old building, is it considered two stories, or is it considered, your offices were on the whatever floor you call that, and then it was a basement?
There's a basement, and there's like a half a flight of stairs to go up to the men's room, but it's classified as a one-story structure with a basement.
So is the square footage that is listed, is that just the one story, or is that the one story plus the basement, do you know?
I don't, I believe it's the one story due to the fact that it's not a finished basement, so I don't think that the, I don't think the architect would have included that.
So you're, is a sign on it possible hazardous remediation to be prepared in the future or something? And where would that, how you address that as part of what you just said today, your oil has been taken care, is that correct?
The LRSP sign that's up there from the DEP, that will be removed soon, because we were given a preliminary clearance that the oil situation is resolved. That's the main environmental concern right now.
And that was like a leaking oil tank or something?
You know what, it was well before I got here, I don't know specifics, I know it was an oil problem, I think it had to do with the tank.
I could check, because I found it kind of fascinating. So you saw in his presentation, it was nineteen oh nine and then nineteen forty, where there were two oil tanks, and we didn't discover it until we were looking at the first one, it was undocumented by the town records, I mean, I found it fascinating, actually. So when we were like digging, we just kept digging and testing and digging.
Okay, and then you found another one, okay. The inherent problem of the building is the roofing?
I don't see evidence of that.
So it's somehow water is getting in through the walls?
Either through the walls, or maybe through the floor to hydrostatic press or something like that.
And you did try some kind of remediation to alleviate that?
These would have been things before me, so I don't know, I can only tell you what I've seen was that they built a platform to raise it.
And there are sump pumps that work under that platform, or is something to pump the water out?
There is, I saw a sump pump, there was one sump pump in the building.
Yeah, if I can add in on that, the foundation's cracked, and the building was originally abandoned back in two thousand and ten because we had a puffback fire with the furnace, as well as the water damage, and it became unsafe for the staff to stay there.
So the furnace had a backfire essentially?
Yeah, yeah, puffback, it was so long ago, yeah. In fact, I think it was, there was a fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was a fire there, too. Extensive smoke damage to the building, and there was remediation done after that, and there was mold damage, and they said, well, the building's okay if you keep the windows open. So, you know, the prudent thing to do was to get everybody, everybody out there.
And what's your schedule for making this a?
So the anticipated schedule would be that tonight, obviously, we wanted to hear from the public, I think by the second meeting in March, we'd like to have a preliminary vote on what the board would like to do in terms of the property going forward, so hopefully by the end of next month, we should have a vote.
Originally, I saw in a newspaper that you were going to make a decision called Doom.
Yeah, we, originally, we tried to do that, that probably wasn't as ambitious as we should have had it been. I think we had our B and G committee look through it, they came back with a recommendation pretty quickly, and it made sense to try to get it out to the public as quickly as possible.
Okay, have you talked to the town about any possible use by the council or the mayor of that building?
Yeah, I did have, I did have two conversations with them, and the town indicated to me they're not interested in the building.
To me, it's sort of a historic building, it'd be nice if somehow it could be used. Honestly, I don't believe in throwing money to the wind, but I'd just say it's been near all the time that I've been here, much longer essentially, since it was built in the early nineteen hundreds, and it may have some historic value. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to find out what's going on tonight, and look forward to see what's gonna happen.
Thank you for your questions, it's great, I appreciate that.
Would you mind signing in real quick?
Thank you very much. So to clarify, the building's bid, the board's committee did not make the recommendation to move faster, but they did come back with a recommendation, and as a result, I decided to move it up a little quicker. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Judy McBride, I'm the president of the Denville Historical Society and the Museum of San Donado.
Thank you for coming out.
Can you give us your town of residence and your street, and you're the president of the Historic Society for the record?
I live on Woodcrest Road in Quest Sydney. We've been in communication with you since October of two thousand and twelve. It really is a shame that this building was allowed to get into treble repair. As you know, I'm sure you have copies of the letters we've sent, we are very interested in renovating the two-room schoolhouse. This is the third school that was built in Denville, and it is directly across the street from the eighteen sixty schoolhouse, which was the second one built, and we took that over and then two years renovated the one-room schoolhouse. The museum is very, very interested, so we have not heard anything back from the mayor. We haven't heard anything back from you until now. You have no idea what the plan is, do you?
As of right now, we're, we've put together this presentation, we want to hear from the public, and then we will caucus and discuss and come up with a plan of what we want to do.
That two-room schoolhouse opened in nineteen oh eight and was open and educating children until nineteen fifty-eight. It has tremendous historic value to Denville, and we really would like to preserve it, so we would like to be kept in the loop. We would like to have a copy of this, so we know what we would be dealing with.
The presentation?
Yes.
I'll post it online tomorrow, but if you like, I can send it to you.
Okay, you do that.
Sure. Can you, would you send me an email tomorrow, and I'll reply with the presentation? Or you can put your email on there.
On where?
Right on the sheet you have.
Sheet right in front of you.
There's a pencil right there.
Nice to see you again, Mr. Body.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything else to do by there?
No, just that we're very upset with the condition of this building.
Thank you.
Mr. Corn.
And your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dr. Corn, K O R N, I'm also a member of the Denville Historical Society. My address is fifteen Lafayette Place in Denville. I've been in town for about thirty-five years, I've been a member of the Historical Society for about twenty years, and I'm kind of the historian to the museum. Some of you people know Vito Bianco, he's also our curator and historian for the museum. We're very interested in the building, we'd like to preserve it if possible. I don't know what the feeling is of your board as far as selling this property, donating the property. We'd like to protect this building because of the history it has of educating students for fifty years in our town. I know the building's in bad shape, but the building that we took over, the second schoolhouse building, was in very bad shape when we took it also. After they closed the school in the early nineteen hundreds, it became a residence, the material was a mess, and we fixed up and cleaned up, and we have a nice building now, the historical site of an early school building in the township of Denville. We give tours of that building to schoolchildren, girls' scout groups, boys' scout groups, so that they can see what an old schoolhouse, one-room schoolhouse is like. And this is the third schoolhouse that Denville has, and we'd like to keep that alive. Once the building is gone or demolished, it's gone forever. Something that could be saved could be saved. I know that the building is worth a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the land is a hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly, I don't know how that money could be raised so that we repentance the board of ed for that kind of a situation. I'd just like you to know that we are very interested in that building, and we would work on repairing it. Where the money's gonna come from to cover that, I don't know, but I'd like you to consider that for us and for the town of Denville. Obviously, I don't think you're gonna want to demolish the building and build something that you have places to work now as a board of ed, using this place, I guess, as a library temporarily. We'd like to have a permanent home, I guess. I'd just like to let you know that we're very concerned and we're interested in preserving that building. I don't have a specific question for you.
Your comments are well reserved, probably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry.
Although I have a feeling anybody else.
Do you want to email addresses?
Sure, I'll send you the presentation, too.
Jeanette Taylor, I am including my maiden name because I was one of the former students in that building. My sister was the last class that graduated from the Union Hill School, and all I can say is, it is heartbreaking to see what has happened to the school. I am delighted to hear that the Historic Society is interested in preserving the building, because there are still a few of us around who attended the school, and I really feel that Denville could not only use the space for meetings, because I know the calendar at Town Hall is always very, very crowded, but the library has for years been talking about expanding. So with a little creativity, maybe we could even make that auxiliary library. But I think with some time and possibly some intervention, we might be able to preserve it. I would certainly like to see that. I have only terrific memories. We were only two rooms, there were four grades, and if you talk about open classroom, we had that, because the doors open if you really looked at the building. And most of the time, four grades were into one, so if you could perform on a fourth-grade level, and you were only a second grader, you were up sitting with the fourth graders. It was probably the reason I went into teaching, because my teachers there inspired me so much. So having said that, I would like to request that you give us a little more time and maybe reconsider your June deadline, so that we could pursue possibly some other alternatives other than having to tear it down. So I thank you.
Thank you, that's great to hear.
Hi, I'm Dorinda Skerman. That's okay, take your time, seventy-sixth Riverside Drive. I'm sorry I didn't get to see the presentation, I walked in late, but my question about it, my comments and my question, I've been coming to the boards now for a few years intermittently, I'm sorry, my heels, but I remember this topic with Dr. Clark, and then Mrs. Mozak, and myself. And this isn't something new, this issue's been going on, so I know there's a lot of new faces on the board, but I, I'd love to hear your stories and all, but from what I've heard in the past, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to this property to get it to a point where people can be in it, and I'm just not sure from a cost perspective it's worthwhile. I know you're gonna go over the budget later, but my thinking is, we don't have the money to do it. So for money, if I came down to dollars and cents, I would probably vote against it, but can anyone speak to the fact that we're on our third superintendent and we're now revisiting it again? Is there anybody?
So I would tell you that you're a hundred percent right, this is the third time that I've, probably, it may have been more, Mary has been here longer, Dawn's been here longer, so it may have been longer than that.
No, it happened when the fire happened, that's when it got abandoned, so it's only been.
So, but since Dr. Clark was here, certainly.
Yes.
And, you know, I think one of the important things was that at some point we needed to make a decision. I think at the beginning of the year, we said, this is it, we're gonna make a decision. And, you know, part of it was evaluating it at the committee level, part of it was involving the community and trying to get as much information as we could out and back end, hearing from every point of view, and then ultimately making a decision at some point. And we're gonna try and do it this year.
Well, my only comment is, is the historical stepping up and saying that you're interested, again, this has been going on for years, so if you're gonna do something, maybe look into it very quickly and see if it's, you know, doable, and then let's make a decision and move on from this.
It's gonna happen.
I mean, so, no. Thank you.
We'll be making decisions here. Thank you. Other comments from the public? I guess what I'd like to do is just maybe go down the road, if you don't mind if you have something to say, I'd love to hear it, I'm sure the public would as well, and we can move on from there. So Dean, I'll start with you, since you're the second junior.
Okay. Yeah, I was one of the people that went out with Mr. Porte the other night, the other day, saw the condition of the building firsthand, and it is a shame, you can see that it was once a beautiful building, and you can see what it used to be. That being said, I don't think it's our mandate to renovate that building, I don't think it necessarily fits into what the mission of the school board's all about. So if the Historic Society would be interested in it, be something that they could take on, I think that would be a great thing, I definitely don't think it's something that, you know, would be a bunch of consideration as far as the school board's concerned getting involved. If we can sell it to them, or sell, or do something like that, I think that would be the right way ahead.
I was at the building yesterday between my snow cleanup, and I'd been there in the past, too, and the building's in worse shape now than it was the first time I looked at it, it's really just in horrible condition. Unfortunately, we haven't had the money to spruce up the building and do repairs, any of the repairs that would have been done were band-aid, were band-aids, the building is need a just major, major repair, starting with the foundation, drainage work on the grounds, and with all the other things we've had to do as a board of ed, with our budgeting, you know, there's been more important things to do, more necessary things to do. We just did a STEM lab, we do, just did, pulled a kindergarten. Our school buildings are old, so we've done major repairs, millions of dollars of repairs of these three schools over the years, roofs, big window job at River View, so that's where our money's gone. I mean, I'm a classic car guy, I love to see old cars, old factory buildings, and, you know, it'd be great to see the building preserved, and we did look into renovating it and expanding it. The building is not adequate in size for the staff of the board of ed, plus all the storage needs that we have, so it would have had to been expanded. We did look at all those options, they were all very, very costly, so we're at the crossroads right now, and we're discussing it at every meeting now, we're glad we have a good turnout here. You know, whatever the final decision is, maybe the Historic Society can get a grant, do some fundraising, and do something with the building. I think that's part of what makes Denville a great community, we do have preservation of historic structures in here, in the town, a great historic area in Morse County, but, you know, it's one of those things where you just don't have enough money to do all the things we want to do for education with the kids, the money is really, really tight. And you look at the newspapers with Park now, all these mandates that come from the federal government and the state government, they sound great, they all cost money, and they cost more money than we were spending five years ago when I first, or nine years ago when I first joined the board.
Thank you. Mary Ann.
I would agree with what you've heard already tonight, I don't believe rehabilitating the building is part of the school's mission, it's not part of educating students now. I have absolutely no problem, you know, having it go to the Historic Society if they wanna find a way to raise the funds to purchase it from us, and they can rehabilitate it. I'd hate to see us lose the history, because I agree, you can't get it back once it's gone, but it's not part of our mission ahead. This has been dragging on for years, I'm acutely aware of it, because I live just past it, so I see it every day of my life as it deteriorates, and, you know, it would be good if somebody took it over to rehabilitate it. We did have the Historic Society in, invited you in, what feels like years ago now.
At least it was.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not that we haven't put our cards on the table that we want, we're not using the building, we don't have intention of using the building, we can't fit back into the building. So there has been time for people to try and figure something out, and it doesn't sound like you're any further or closer to finding funds for the building now than when we had this discussion, like I said, could have been a year ago, could have been three, I'm not sure when.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, first want to thank the public for coming out, I think it's important to get feedback from people in the public as to what's important to them. I want to thank Mr. Appeloni for taking this on, this is something that's been important to me, I drive by the building quite a bit, be on that side of town, and the condition it's in right now is not acceptable, so something needs to be addressed on it. I can make a few comments, the board office we're currently in, I can tell you, the first time I walked in, it feels cramped to begin with at twenty-eight hundred square feet, it's probably not really, we probably need more space there to begin with, so clearly the building and the space we have at five oh one Open Aki is not big enough for our board office. And I would say that, me personally, I'm willing to look at creative solutions on what to do here, I think it is important to try to preserve the building. However, that being said, I think that when we look at how we spend our money, the first question that I always ask is, every dollar that goes out, what does it do for a student in Denville? Does it help the education of the students? So as far as preserving the building, I have a hard time looking at the numbers where we've gotten a third-party architect to come in and talk about the cost that would be associated with, it's very difficult for us to restore that building back to what it would be. I also was at the building recently, and I was, you know, I've seen the building from the outside a lot, I've never been inside the building till yesterday, and I was shocked at what was inside there, I was actually, I didn't think it was in as bad a shape as it was, I mean, the outside doesn't look nearly as bad as it is on the inside, so I was really surprised, so. But I do thank everybody for coming out, I think that helps me in kind of making a decision, or at least voting for it, so thank you very much for everybody coming out.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, I dug this up from the notes, this is a four-years-ago discussion. And I want to thank this Judy, because I think if you didn't have come four years ago, it would have been demolished, and it's way, a few of us, we were ready, that people were, we were concerned about health and safety, and then, you know, so half full, half empty, it's still standing, you know, it's still a year, the issue. This isn't like a Madison or Chatham where there's these huge endowments and people like coming forward like, you know, with help. So, but what I want to share with you guys, this was from Drew's tenure, and the prices here are certainly more modest than what was proposed tonight. I don't know about the whole, like, whether you have to be, maybe this is a question for you, John. If, like, you wanted to designate it for office space, like, no children or something? Like, not for school use, but more for office, do you have to, will the compliance, like, for storage of documents or...
Yeah.
So, all right, so we need, I think, a little more detail. Before I, I'd feel comfortable with this presentation, like, some backup on what the new architect is saying needs to be done. Because this was more modest numbers and I think perhaps we could work something out, like, not a $1 thing, but some sort of solution where, you know, you help rehab it. And because even, I think, what you could do with the nature of these prefabs is, there might even be enough space on the lot should you want to try to build around it to, like, for the staff. Because it does bother me that we're spending $50,000 a year and they're displaced. It's like, to your point, it's not optimized. So we still haven't come up with a final solution for the staff. And when they were in the house, it was five people, it was the business office. And now in the rental space, there's 10 people. So we are looking in this year's budget to put together, like, a space allocation study where we can kind of remove people from the trailers and, as the enrollment declines, kind of restructure the entire district to see where we can move people. So I'm kind of hoping that this office part is part of it. I don't think you need to have all 10 of them together, but more work needs to be done before we can say concretely what to do. Seven.
That's where I stand.
So I certainly appreciate the public's comments, you know, some of which I've heard, some of which I haven't, which is great to hear, certainly from the board as well. You know, I think one of the important things, I had a phone call on the way here. And, you know, one of the comments I made was that a lot of our decisions are wrong and right at the same time. And I guess it depends on the perspective that you look at it. You know, if you love history and you appreciate its value to the education of our kids, you can see how maintaining the property or rehabbing the property is important. If you understand that we don't have a lot of the money that we need to do the things that we have to, let alone the things that we want to, I think that you understand that it doesn't necessarily fit into our plans either. I think there is a lot to take in, including, I think, what Barb, which you just gave us as well. And really, I think each one of us needs to think through, not just what you think now, but do some soul-searching, talk to the public, continue to do some more research so that we can come back and ultimately make an educated vote on what we should be doing with the property. I think from Historical Society, I mean, we're almost out of time. I know we were in a couple of years ago and the answer was, we don't have the money to do anything either. But at the time, it was the same answers we're getting now. And as much as, you know, the board would love to be in a position to say, "Here," or "We'll rehab it for you," or something in that realm, the reality is that that's not the position the board's in now. Where, again, we're having to hold back on purchasing current buildings and for current educational needs. Because, you know, just like Don said in regard to Park and everything else that the state pushed it down, we don't have the dollars to do it already. So I certainly appreciate you all coming out and at the very least, listening, if not speaking as well. Board members will hopefully take all of this to heart and will set up some time in the near future to try to make an educated vote. Again, to the Historical Society, if you can reach out to Steve with your email address, if you have one, you put it up there. He'll send you out this slide deck and make sure that you have that information. And then hopefully, we can get maybe some information back from you if you have a plan of actions. Sorry, good.
Can I request that the members of the board review the old minutes of meetings that we intended along with the town representatives? And review the three letters that we sent to the board over the years with proposals and anticipated action that we would take?
Now, of course, we'll try to pull those up for, I'm sure we have our email records, some of us who've been here. And those who don't, we'll try to pull those together and pass those to them as well. But respectfully, if you could, at least let us know where you're at now, not where you were three years ago, in regards to the opportunities that you may have for the property, that would be helpful.
We're at the same place, we're just waiting.
Okay.
Contact you or...
Mr. Forte, you're perfect.
I just want to make a couple of quick comments again. So to me, this is really a shame that it's gotten to this point. I mean, I don't know, I don't really know a way to explain it other than shock and disappointment, considering I live here as well. And I wanted to bring this to the forefront as something we need to make a decision on. Simple as that. After getting my facts straight from our architect, and it's very, I get it, a lot of people, I know people are gonna say those figures are high and all that. And I've been thinking about this non-stop. So I came up with this idea. Even if our figures are double and they're off by double, like, in other words, $1.5 million is really $750,000. There's no way, while I'm here, I would ever recommend to this board to spend $750,000 to rehab that building. It would definitely not be something I would consider. And I would never, never recommend spending $1.1 million building another building on that same site. It just doesn't make sense to me to have it there at that site. It would make sense to have it on Lakeview or on Valley View so that our people are actually in the schools and we're not maintaining another property. But there is, under no circumstances am I gonna recommend a $750,000 fix for a 1,500-square-foot building. And that's assuming our guy's off by double. Okay? Now, the next part is, and I'm okay with this, but I'm putting it out to you guys, is that if we want a more comprehensive study, like it was just thrown out, he's not gonna do it for free. So we're gonna have to get a proposal and there's gonna be a cost involved if we want him to research and look into a more detailed budget and plans for rehabbing that structure. This is a, this is his, you know, I'm giving you an estimate number because you didn't pay me anything to come and do it. It's gonna take, you know, it's a fairly involved process for him to come look at a building of that type. It's not like you're saying, you know, build from scratch. It's, he has to look at all the stuff and be involved in it, have engineers involved. If we, if we're interested in that, I would look at it. I still, the problem I'm having though, they still won't recommend a $750,000 rehab, no matter what. Even if it was $600,000, we're off by even that much, I still wouldn't recommend it. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm having such a hard time dealing with even considering a rehab. I mean, and a rebuild, I just can't consider either of the two choices. Obviously, you know, I answer to you, so if, as a whole, you're saying to me, "Go out and, you know, get the architect to give us a more detailed plan," you know, or a quote for this service, I have no problem with that. He'll give us a quote for how much he'll charge us to come out and, you know, say, "Steve, I'm gonna, we're gonna look at the foundation, we're gonna come up with a plan, and we're gonna come up with a way that you can make this building viable." Even though I had to, John, I had to pester him to give us this because he said this is the worst idea out of all the bad ideas is rehabbing this building. That's what he said. I said, "I know, but I want to have the information anyway." So he said, "Okay," and came back to me and said, "Okay, this is what I'm saying. You need to build a small addition, you're gonna have 1,500 square feet of space, and it's gonna be about $1.5 million." I said, "Okay, I need the info." So I really don't mind if you guys, I will call him tomorrow and I'll ask him to give us a proposal for the cost of studying this work, if that's what everybody wants to do.
I don't know that you're getting that recommendation from the board yet.
Or from us?
So, I don't know, unless I see a...
Well, I would say we had that done by LAN, so it can't be too far in the file.
So LAN has a pretty strong study of this? And even LAN's numbers of, of what he, does he have a renovation? He does, bare minimum, $300,000. All right, we will look for that LAN document if we can find it, right? What, do you know what year you guys did this, approximately?
I think this was the 2010-11 budget.
Okay. And...
Drew definitely supplied it.
Yeah, I think that this handout that Barb did was done by LAN.
Okay. So...
So I, you know, I don't want to spend any more money. We've had two architects look at the building to spend any more money on a place that's about ready to collapse. It's not a good use of the taxpayers' money, and we got so many other things to spend money on. So I think we listen to the public, continue to have it on the agenda, and keep on moving forward with, you know, maybe an informed decision on what we want to do with the property.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm getting much support in terms of spending dollars on getting a much more thorough estimate.
And I don't understand, we just had them do our long-range facility and when they came out, it was for all four of our sites. So we did pay money for them to look at that building.
And, and, number one...
So they should be able to stand behind something because we paid them to look at that building.
Number one, when we first did it, I remember bringing this to all of you. It was not for that, it was for...
I know, but you switched...
Hold on, it was for three buildings, not four properties either. And he did say to me that the retainer you gave would cover us doing this, but not in detail like what we're talking about. So he did give us, he, in the long-range facilities plan, there's a plan for rebuilding, and it's like, I don't know, $2.1 million.
$2.1.
He did not include a rehab in the long-range facilities plan because he was telling me it was the worst idea in...
He has demolition, 97.5, and new construction, 2.1.
Right, and that, and look, that number's based on a square-footage number. It's not, there's no planning involved, it's, you need 3,500 square feet. He figures out the square-footage cost and multiplies, that's where that came from.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm saying, because we originally, before you came, thought we were having the long-range facility planned done. You brought to light that it never actually happened, and you told us it was only for three. We upgraded it and paid more, and it was for all?
We didn't pay more. It was a retainer, it was a number. And I didn't say we weren't having it done, I said it didn't include the grounds, which is important because the grounds, you know, have paving and masonry. Didn't include the grounds, didn't include the bus garage, it didn't include 501 Open Aki. So I asked him to put it in. His exact words back to me were, "The number I quoted you is enough for us to include those kinds of things." It does not include, like, an in-depth study. It includes, like you said, I'll come there and say, "The building, new building, for 3,500 square feet will be this much money." But I don't, I have no problem with going back to him on this and telling him, "We need more detail."
Well, I have not heard anybody say we need more detail.
No, we don't, we have way more detail at this point.
We'll look back at the land study, but, I mean, you know, four years ago, that's a long time in building destruction. I mean, the amount of building materials that got up and all the different, you know, requirements, they change all the time. So, you know, we'll look at it and see what happens.
Well, I think that what Barb gave us, you know, if there's anything else, John, that John, that you can find, maybe board members can do that as well, but I think this would suffice in addition to what Steve has given us. Sure.
Sorry, one last question. I certainly didn't understand where the superintendent's coming from. You know, dollars and cents is a very important thing to all the taxpayers. The ideal thing is somehow that some other organization takes it over, that you guys worship yourself from it, and that somehow they pay for doing whatever they want to do. So do you have a number of what you would sell it to the Historical Society or some of this group for? So they could be working to it?
We have the number, but we can't give it out yet. Because it's still like a draft form, so we can't talk about it yet. And we also have to have our strategy in place, you know. This is not that easy, selling a piece of property, like, yep, there's a lawyers and it has to be bid and all that. But we will, we, that is definitely an option. Because, like I said, it's not part of our mission, but it's definitely part of their mission.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm not versed in that.
But this is R1 zone, so technically, you can only build a house and that property without a variance.
Right.
Right? Secondly, have you looked at the cost to build new board offices at either Lakeview or here?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what the price he gave us. And he said, "To do it at Lakeview would be a little bit more because you have a lot more, what's the word? What do you use? Ground? No, site, site work. There'd be more site work because there's trees and they have to, you know, cut a road. And it'd be more site work than building it on that site. So if you were gonna build from scratch, building it there would be more cost-effective than building it at Lakeview. But it's still, you know, $2 million. Maybe it'd be $2.5 million if you built it over on Lakeview. Because, you know, you know what I mean, like, there's all trees and...
Sure.
There'd be more engineering involved and things like that.
So the, you know, and that's what I was talking about, the Historical Society or I guess anyone else who's listening to our voices right now. If there's an option that they have or an opinion that they can email us about, esforte@denville.org, feel free. But in the meantime, like I said, the board will take these comments, their own comments, the information that we've had, the information that we now have into consideration. And hopefully, we'll try to schedule a vote sometime in the near future to the board. So moving on, and talking about not having any money to talking about having less money. We'll be talking now about the budget, and then similarly to the 501 Open Aki property. We will go through the budget, Mr. Forte will give us a presentation, and then we'll allow for the members to ask some questions if they like.
All right, you guys want to move up? My, the thing, the flag and the pole might be in your way.
Get the camera right back.
Yeah, I'll move it. Just take a minute to regroup, stop the vote for one minute or that.
So as a reminder, this is a preliminary budget that the, are we trying to vote on this in...
First meeting, first meeting in March?
March 9th, yeah.
So right now, it's tentative, essentially, we voted on the first meeting in March.
March, March 9th, March 9th, the vote will be to send the preliminary budget to the county for approval and have it advertised to the public. Then the April 27th would be the final, for adoption, like that's at the chambers.
So as a preliminary budget, so obviously you have the alternative to change, adjust it, amend it, and work on to meet the needs of the budget. This I would characterize as the recommendation from our superintendent and the DA. Is that the fair way to put it, Steve?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So without further ado. So Mr. Napoli just explained to you the process. The process is that this is a preliminary budget, meaning that these are the recommendations to the board from the superintendent and from the administration comes through. And the committees go through it and review it. And it's a working, living document for a time being. So obviously, when that time is where it's approved. It's a little small for you guys, but this is basically the calendar. So it's a pretty long, involved process coming up with a budget. You start in November, maybe even a little bit in October, where we ask the principals and directors, "What are your budget needs for the next year?" So in November of 2014, they're planning on things that happen in the 15, 16th school year, which is difficult to do because things come up. So those things are submitted to us, we look at them, we review them. We might send them back and say, "We need more info," things like that. Then you have, goes through the committees, then the budget, then the preliminary budget is distributed to the board on February 18th this year. Tonight is the 23rd of February. We also have two finance meetings dedicated solely to the budget each month during this budget process. And then either on March 9th or March 16th, if need be, if we can't come to a determination of what we want to do, we would have to have a special meeting on the 16th, if we can't do it on the 9th because it's due to the county, the preliminary budgets are due to the county on March 20th. Then we schedule meetings with the town, go around, and we have our final budget is approved. And then it's, I don't want to give my glasses, you know. I was looking at this idea and it said, "It looks so fun, but it's my fault." So then we, then we have some hearings and we talk about it and we put it online and do all that. So this is the, this is the goals for the school year this year that the Board of Education made and approved back in the fall. Create a comprehensive communications plan, including benchmarks for implementation. This was to improve the communications in the district as a whole. Getting the word out to people, somehow coming up with ways to engage the public more than we were. So some of the things we did was we started this system of YouTube. And the YouTube videos, it's a simple way, it's a, it's a home-use camera, $800 camera, something like that. Somebody videotapes the meetings, we post it online. The last board meeting had about 150 hits. So that's a good thing, where you have, you know, normally we come to a meeting and there's one, maybe two people. Now you have 150 people watching it on outside. And now everybody keeps saying, "Well, I..." watching it on outside. And now everybody keeps saying, "Well, I watched it 10 times." What do you mean if you took out all those people that watched it 10 times? I don't know why, because I don't watch it even once. Maybe there's still another 50 people or 100 people that watch it. So that's a good thing. So we're trying to do as many things about communications as possible. We do a lot more in the newspaper. I don't know if you noticed recently, but there's a lot more about the Denville schools in the neighbor news. We even had a nice big article in the, in the Citizen, which I didn't even know there was such a thing until I emailed her and asked her to come, and it was pretty cool. Though, we're always using data. The second one is, is a continuation of something that this board has focused on for, it's gotta be, what, four years or so, using data to identify areas for, to improve student achievement. The last one's hard. It's hard, but it's, it's something that is very important. How do you, how do you, how do you raise the bar, basically, and create a district of high expectations within the community? To me, that means everything matters. Everything you do matters. You can't have, you can't have broken things. You can't do things halfway. You do things nicely. You do things like this. By the way, I'm getting this taken off, by the way. But you have this. Instead of an abandoned house as my letterhead, which was bothersome to me, now we have this nice educating power cell. And these two things will be gone. I'm not crazy about that. Look. But I came in tonight, so it'll come off, Dave. I see your face. So those are the kinds of things that we want to do to raise the bar and, and basically do what you expect to find in Denville. You know, you don't, you don't expect to find an abandoned building on the superintendent's letterhead. I don't expect that. I wouldn't expect it from us. We wanna have, we wanna raise the bar and bring, bring this place up. Next one. Here's some things that, that I am recommending to put in the budget to, to drive, to drive the district forward. Now, obviously, the first one, and I know everybody's gonna talk about it, so let's talk about it now, is to add a supervisor of curriculum. Not the director of curriculum, but a supervisor, a person who helps, helps evaluate the staff. My, one of the big reasons why I think this is important is that we've outsourced the evaluation of our staff to a, to a third party. I would like to bring that in-house. The cost of doing this is not, there's a $100,000 bill there, but because there, there will be decreases in some other areas, it's more, it's more like about a $50,000 bill. So if we decide to pull that, that line out and say, "We're not supporting that, we're pulling it out," it would still cost us $50,000 because the other parts of the person's job would still have to be done by somebody else. So even though the, the estimated cost right now is $100,000, if, if we, if we pull it out, remember, it's still $50,000 you have to put back in the budget. Sustainable Jersey is something that, that we're still talking about and deciding on whether or not we want to be part of. It's about being green in the district. So, so this is not even finalized, but there are, there will be some costs associated with it. I put it in the budget because I felt like if we want to move forward with this, which I think is a good thing, and the town of Denville just got their bronze medal, correct? Bronze? So I think it's something that we should do. So there is a, a small theme there. We're, this next thing is a really big thing. We're going to offer, if this thing passes and we get this thing going, we're gonna have honors bio in eighth grade for a select group of kids. The kids that are the most advanced kids. So we have a very advanced group of kids taking high school classes and middle school and math, and then we'll offer a science class for them. The positive thing about this is, you know, in middle school, they will finish their honors bio, meaning some of those kids will go right into AP Bio or, or Advanced or, or an honors camp. This is not for all the kids. This is not for my kids, most likely, right? But this is for this select group of the top, top smartest math kids and science kids in the district. It's, I think it's an important thing that would drive us forward. It's also an area that we could probably look to bring in students for tuition, like, like the Mountain Lakes Public Schools do. I don't know if you do this, know this, but they bring in kids for tuition. So maybe we do open up and sell a few seats and actually fund any fees associated with it from people from the outside. I would all be, I would be totally for that. Textbooks, we need, our science textbooks are right out of date. Dr. Colless has identified this as a big need. It's a, it's a big number. It's $170,000 for textbooks K to, K to 8. We said, "That's too much to do in one year, so let's phase it out in two years." And so that number's in there. We, we've had a lot of problems in technology. Technology has been a problem since I got here, and I'm sure it was a problem before. It's an area of need, it's an area of concern. These are the kinds of things that will help us. We have many more needs. Our, our technology department identified more than double the amount that we have up there. So this would be a start on like a three-year plan to start phasing in and doing some big projects. So some of it, one of the things is we, we would hire a person from the outside to help us do some of the projects because our people have to handle the project, their normal projects. So rather than hiring a company saying to wire the new wireless access points, it costs a lot of money, we can hire, we can hire a person to give us a guy who knows how to wire, and that person can, can wire for us the summer, and it's about a fourth of the cost of actually having them install it. So I think that was, that's a really good thing. We have a website upgrade in there. If we, this is something we have in our budget, that we want to move towards a little bit more modern website. Again, these are all, all possibilities. Security, we have a small number in the budget for security, $26,600 total. That includes replacing some of our windows with, with shadow proof glass or ballistic film. That's recommended by the, by the, by the experts that we've engaged. And also improving our cameras. We, we want to try to bring all of our stuff working together. It's kinda silly that we have three different platforms that don't speak to each other. So normally, right, I would pull out my smartphone and call lockdown. That would lock the front door so that staff can't come in. Our system's like, not like that. So we'd like to bring that all together and have everything communicate with each other, and maybe even expand our camera situation here. The teacher attendance scanner is just what it is right now. We're, we're taking attendance through something that doesn't work for attendance, so we want to fix it to something else. We could just go back to an old sign-in thing, but for a small number, we could, we can actually computerize that and, and be able to run reports, and it's a positive thing. Buildings and grounds. So this board has committed over the last few years to do several projects over the summer. We're recommending these buildings and grounds projects. Some of them, you see, the TBD are, are yet to be determined. They'll come from the long-range facilities plan. But we have to remember, it's very easy to say, "Let's do some HVAC state" because we're having problems in HVAC. Today I got woken up by HVAC problem at Lakeview. So the, the first thing is, let's put all our money into HVAC state. The reason why I wouldn't recommend that is because John and I have been spending a great deal of time working on this thing called ESIP. It's called Energy Savings Improvement Plan. That program will help us fund the needed repairs for our HVAC that will be budget neutral. It's a very interesting plan. What happens is, you engage these corp, these companies, there's no fee to the district. They come in and they do a very comprehensive audit of all of your, all of your HVAC windows, doors, everything. HVAC stands, if everybody doesn't know, it's like the heating and cooling and all that. And all the power, your, your electric lights, everything like that. They come in, they do an audit. They say, "Denville School District, if you make these changes, you'll save $2 million." And I'm not exaggerating. That's exactly what they'll say. Could be 1.8 million, it could be 2.5 million, maybe it's 1.5 million, whatever it is. Say they say, "Steve Forte, Denville Schools will save you, you will save in the next 15 years, $2 million if you make these 20 changes. Your light fixtures, you know, new, new controls, new, new unit vents, things like that." What they do is they let you leverage that 20, that $2 million in savings to, to buy the stuff, so it doesn't, it stays budget neutral. There's no impact on the taxpayer. You don't get it for free, but you're, what you're, what you're doing is you're leveraging the savings. And here's the best part, they guarantee the savings. These are big companies. Those aren't like, you know, Joe's ESIP company. It's like Honeywell and, what's the other one? Honeywell and Con Edison. These are huge companies. And they, they guarantee the savings. So if you don't, if, if they say, "You're gonna save $150,000 a year, you save 140, they have to give you 10,000." So it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to get some projects done that, that will be budget neutral. The reason why I'm saying this so much is that I don't even want to put things like that on the budget. You know, where, where we possibly can do with ESIP, why are we gonna fund it in a different way? Let's get the most bang for our buck from ESIP. I hate to see the architect fees, but that's just, that's just reality. When you use, when you use capital reserve or any, anything to do capital projects, you have to have the architect fees in there. So believe it or not, if you use, if you use capital reserve because you want to replace the front doors here in Value View, you have to have drawings signed. And it's, it's just the way it is. It's not, it's not, you know, what I want to do, but it's the way the state requires. So you have to have the architect fees in there. This, the demographic, the demographic and room utilization study to me is very important. And I know there's been some pushback, and I'm okay with that. But you have to understand that we have trailers in our school district. We have trailers on all four of our building sites, and they've been there for 12 years. And we need to come up with a permanent solution. We can't...
Three buildings.
What did I say?
Four.
Four, sorry about that. Three, there's, there's, there's trailers around the district. They're on all three of our sites, and they're 12 years old. And some of the, some of the repairs are not inexpensive, like the Value View in the back here, the awning is at pretty much its intended lifespan. We've rigged it and fixed it and made it as good as possible. But you're talking about a 30, 40,000 dollar awning that we might have to put on something that's not meant to be there anymore. So what this study would do, this person would come in and study our demographics, study our, our live births and, and all the things like that, come up with, come up with a plan of what he thinks your population looks like. Then he does a room utilization study, finding out in detail how you can move people around and save space. By doing that, you have a person now that's, that's helping us make decisions that are huge decisions. For example, today, I reached out to find out how much approximately a trailer costs. And our architects first said, "The first thing is, they won't give you a trailer anymore. You cannot get trailers." I said, "All right, well, what if you could?" He goes, "You can't." I said, "All right, just tell me anyway, just in case you could." He goes, "All right. In the event that you could, which you can, it would cost you approximately $150,000 for site work for each two-room trailer, and then approximately another $150,000 over, over a 10-year life." So, so each trailer would be about $300,000 to put the trailer. I thought that was valuable information. We need to know that. We, we can no longer sit here and pretend that the trailers are okay because they're not. We have to come up with a solution. To me, this is the way to go. And I, and I, that's what I'm asking you to do. The Value View cafeteria tables, we believe are the originals. They look like they're originals, and they're just pretty much shot. They're beyond their useful life. And I know they're expensive. You know, it's not, they're, they're expensive, but in the news recently, we've seen the tragedy, and I don't want to do a knee-jerk reaction, and this was on our radio prior to that, but, and you know, I went and saw them myself. The, the wheels are falling off and they're ripping up the floor. It's just at the point where they need to be replaced. One of our trailers, number three, that's what demo Lakeview trailer, one of our trailers actually, yeah, I walked on it the other day. I'm like, I was afraid because it was squishing all the way down. And he goes, "Don't step there." I was like, "This is not good. You can't have a spot that you can't step on." So we're gonna demo that trailer. It was given to us for free, so it's time to get rid of it. Because it's funny, like, they gave it to you free. You probably had it for 20 years too. So it's time to demo that trailer. We had a little problem with the bathroom floor at Lakeview. We have a gym door that's, that's broken over there, so we replaced that. Back in 2000, there was an oil spill on this property. It was, and the, the biggest problem was, we never closed out the, we never closed out the DEP case. So what happens is, in 2000, the laws were different. Now in 2000, this happened in 2014, the laws are a lot tougher. So since the case wasn't closed out, now they said, "Guess what? You gotta close out this case." And we have a preliminary budget estimate of, was that coming in finalized?
No.
No.
Preliminary.
Preliminary budget estimate of 35,000. We could be anywhere between 25 and 35. We, we put 35. We don't expect it to go more than 35, but we don't expect it to go under 25. And what that is, is they actually have to come in here with heavy equipment, dig up this area that's 10 feet below the ground, cart all the soil off because it's got oil in it, and it goes out to Pennsylvania, gets burned. It's a pretty big process. When you have a school, you can't cap it. I know it's the first thing I would say, is why don't we just put something over it? You can't cap it because they're not a school property. We have to do this. This is not something we can even really put off. They, this has to be done within two years. And that's the way it is. We have two gym floors in here. One of the things is, sometimes, every year, we, what's called, "Screen the floors." When we screen the floors, we just go over them quickly and we re-varnish them. So it's, they look good in the beginning of the year. They're, they're not slippery like they are normally. But we haven't done the, we haven't done a total redo of the gym floors in a few years. The one at River View, there was a, a leak in the ceiling. They replaced an area of the floor, but they never refinished the floor. So if those of you have been at River View, you'll see like different looking floor in the middle of the floor. So this, this job, and it's time for that floor to be redone, would, would strip the floor totally down, repaint it, refinish it, and make it look like it's new. And, and Value View's as well, has not been done in years, and it's, it's at the point where it's time to be done. This thing, this next thing is really finishing, part of it is finishing what we started last year. The one side, we did the cafeteria side of those folding doors, and, and this guy will come out, he'll re, he'll rehab the gym mats that are fraying and ripping, and he'll fix the bottom of the other side of the door that we didn't do. So for some, I don't know why, I guess there was a, like, circuit for cross, but we thought we were getting the one side done, but we only got, we only, we thought we were getting both sides done, and we only got one side done. These next things at the bottom would be new vehicles. Some of these vehicles, actually by spending the money saves us money. It's, it's, it's very, it's very interesting. It's a good use of money. This year, we bought, we bought a van for about $18,500, and we were able to save about $40,000 in, in transportation costs by, by doing it ourselves. So we have some vans like that in there. We also have a bus lease in there. This, that bus lease in there is $30,000. We put it in because, because we're out of the cycle. The problem's gonna be in a couple of years. If we stay, stay where we're at, we're gonna need six buses. So six buses is a pretty big number. So what we're saying is, maybe we want to get off this cycle of six. This is also something that we could look at again and, and reallocate the money or take it out. And the maintenance vehicle goes hand in hand with the, with the B&amp;G person that we, that we're, that we're recommending. And that B&amp;G person is already in our, sorry, that was the first thing. B&amp;G staff, $50,000. That would include bringing a person on, onsite. We did have a temporary person that we kept all year, but we can't do that any longer. So we have to bring something onsite. So it's really just maintaining what we have. It's not an additional person. It's not, it's not the temporary guy and a guy. It's just the temporary guy becoming regular, if everybody understands that.
Steve, Steve, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you mind going over? Can you just explain for the public Fund 11? Because you got it written in there a few times, just like...
Yeah. Fund 11 means it won't be in, there's, your capital funds are in 12, so we want to, you know, when we presented it, if you're looking for it in your budget, it's gonna be in what they call Fund 11. It's more, we're calling it a project for the maintenance by the state, the way they do it formally. So that's why we want to break those out, so it won't be in Fund 12, which is capital.
It's important because you can't demo something in capital. There's a couple of things like that. So this is a group that I put together. It's important, and I want to stick with this group. This group is not a random group. This is a group that has, that actually makes sense when we put it together. It's not forced in. This is called, what I like to call our comp group. Our comp group is all districts, every one, not ones that make it look good and I took some out because it made us look bad. Every single district from Central Jersey through, through North Jersey. So from Somerset County to Bergen County. Every district that meets these criteria. They're K8. The reason why they have to be K8 is because when you have a high school, everything's different. I'm talking about like your, your finances. It just doesn't match up. So you have to have, you have to compare a K8 to a K. You can't compare a K8 to a K12 and a K8 to a 912. It's just, it's like an apple and an orange. The next thing is, they're all similar size, between 1,000 and 3,000 students. And they're all what's called I factor. So the, the state of New Jersey came up with this, this classification of districts a while ago. A being the least affluent, J being the most affluent. A would be something like Newark and East Orange and Irvington. J would be Mountain Lakes, Millburn, Montgomery, places like that. Denville is I. I is one rung less affluent than, than like Mountain Lakes. So we're, we're stuck in this group. So these are all the schools that meet all these criterias. So you can see from Branchburg down to Wyecroft. Again, this is a heavy hitter group, right? I mean, Franklin Heights is in there, and Closters in there. So these are, this is a heavy hitter group, but we fit into this group. We may be on the lower end of this group, but we're definitely not the bottom of this group. But we could, we could definitely be demographically toward the lower end of this group in financial reasons. So if you put all these things in there, you can see where we rank in some of these areas. Our, our per pupil costs out of the 15 were 13th, meaning ours is the 13th lowest per pupil spending. Our budget, our, this is budgeted in spending, so it's a little different. Our supply costs is, we're 10th. Maintenance, we're the last. So we spend the least amount per student on the maintenance of our... So we spend the least amount per student on the maintenance of our properties out of all these other districts in our comp group, out of 15. It's an important distinction because we do have areas of need. And then I also put in there the average property tax, which you can argue back and forth. Bergen County is harder compared to Mars. Because, and Essex is hard to compare to Mars too because of their high county property taxes. But it's, sometimes it's eye-opening. And I'm not, I was not shocked when I saw the 15 maintenance. I mean, it made sense to me. We had duct tape rails. I mean, it just made sense to me that you would have the lowest amount per pupil if you have some things that are messed up. So we're trying to raise the bar, that's what I was talking about. So here's your preliminary tax, your tax increases and your budget. So our increase in the budget, John, you might want to help me with some of this info. And this is, this is really unique to Denville, right? But some of this, they like, this is the data that they put out.
Yeah, this is, we just piggyback on what had been presented previously to keep everything going in the same direction and make it easier for us to try and fit into this presentation. So this is on the bottom of the presentation. The average, as it stands right now, the increase to the average homeowner would be $66 a month.
A year.
Excuse me, a year, oh my gosh, yes, a year, $552 a month. We were able to, the town saw an increase in ratables this year. And this is presented on an annual basis. So that's why these numbers are presented the way they are. Again, just going the same way as it always has been presented. And it's presented the same way in all school districts, that the taxes are annualized. So that's the data where we are. If there were no changes to the budget, the average homeowner, and the average home is assessed at $307,000. So if your home is assessed more, then you would pay more. If it's assessed less, you would pay less.
So the important distinctions here are, when our evaluations last year went down, the district decided to keep the tax increase very, very small, to balance it out for everybody. And even doing so, we were out of $85 increase by doing that. Now, things have stabilized in the evaluations. As a matter of fact, the number went up about $2.5 million, I think? In property value in the district? So, what was that?
Yeah, a rate.
The ratables went up.
The ratables went up.
That's right.
The ratables went up about $2.5 million. So there was like a $20-something million decrease, am I right? Or am I aware, I think that was about what it was, right? So the year before, there was like a $20 million plus decrease in the amount of ratables in the district. And then this year, it kind of flattened off. And then we actually made a little gains, $2.5 million. So what this budget represents that we're suggesting here is, instead of doing a 2%, 2% like a lot of places do, you do 2% one year, you do 2% the next year, the budget went up about .4, .5.
The general fund went up .33 last year.
.33. So what this budget represents is a 4% increase over two years. Making up some of that lost revenue from last year and bringing it forward to this year. Another important thing is when you, when you build your budget and you come in under 2%, or you have any other kind of waivers, the state gives you some waivers sometimes. But if you don't use all the money that you can, if you don't, if you don't take all the tax money you can, you can do what's called banking it. And it's a good thing because if you don't need 2%, you only need 1.5%. You can bank a half a percent for up to three years. You do have to be wary though. If you let it expire, because after the third year, you can never have that money back. Meaning you can't continue to grow your budget in that manner, okay? So last year, the district decided to come in at that low number, the evaluations, all that stuff played into it. But we did, as a group and as a district here, allow $77,000 of banked cap to expire. Meaning you can no longer get that back. This year, we have $254,000 expiring of banked cap. Meaning if we don't use the $254,000, you never get it back. Next year, we have $578,000 of cap, banked cap expiring. So what this budget shows is, is again, 4% over two years. So we're going to catch up a little bit from last year to this year. And we're going to use all the expiring cap this year and a little bit of the expiring cap next year. Because I doubt we're all going to sit around here with, and say that it'll be okay to take all $578,000 next year. So again, it's a 4% over two years. And the cost to the average homeowner increase, the increase to the average homeowner next year is $66 a year. So these are some of the things that drive the budget. The budget gets driven by a lot of things, but this is one of them. These are a couple of them. One of them is special education cost increase. We have, we have costs that go up in this area faster and bigger increases than some other areas. Some of it has to do with the legal part, where students want to go out the district and we have to, we have to go and go to court sometimes and the legal bills associated with that. And then also paying the tuition. So some of these cases can be $100,000 plus just for one student. So that can drive the budget up. I mean, you can imagine where you just have one extra for $100,000. That's a pretty big number. Out of that, out of the amount of budget, out of the amount that you can increase the budget, if $100,000 of it's going towards one student, that's important to note. We also have what, I know Don started hinting on some of these unfunded mandates. Things that come down from the state that you have to do, but they don't help you fund. One of the things was the HIB law. They brought all this out, they made you do all this stuff. And then I think they gave you like $3,000. And if you figured it out, some districts hired staff to handle this. The teachers evaluation model was another one, where there's more evaluations. It's more time-consuming, more involved, and there was no money that backed it up. Park, the technology required for park was another big budget driver in terms of things that were unfunded, mandates that were unfunded. Our health benefits continue to rise all the time, and they don't rise at a 2% rate. They're rising at a much greater rate than that. And then also, believe it or not, in this nice district, we have a couple of kids that chose to go to charter schools. And we have a few more than we did the year before. So I think we have five additional or four additional. And it's about $55,000 going towards charter school tuition. That'd be extra, so that we didn't have budgeted going into next year. So that's another big budget driver. So here's just a couple of diginos. So I talked a little bit about ESIP. This is a really important program. I think, I think the ESIP program is a really great opportunity. It's almost one of those things like, why isn't everybody doing it? The reason is because it's a lot of work. But it's an important thing that I think we can do. We can leverage these savings and do a significant amount of work in our district through this process. Another thing that I really like to point out and I'm proud of is that this budget also includes $100,000 in new revenue that does not come from the local taxpayers. Meaning we're able to do some rentals. We rented out, we rented out some stuff, right? We were able to sign a contract with the Y to actually rent and give us some of the money they make on the aftercare program without raising the cost to the parents. So we were able to bring some of that money in-house. We rented, we rented our facilities to the Yankees and the Giants for summer camps. We were getting about $7,500 for that. I was able to do some things with tuition. We're going to bring in some new tuition that we never had before. And then this also represents a reduction in our activity fee. And I know the numbers we talked about are a little different. It's because I did this math like in October, and I was, I was off a little bit on what I was saying. So this is the real, the real math I made up. But I'm totally open to, hopefully if you guys have more suggestions, you want to do something different with this, I'd be, I'd be happy to hear it. Right now, the River View clubs, if your son or daughter takes a, does a club in River View, it costs $50. My budget proposal would bring that down to 25. If you do a Value View club, the cost is $150 for one club. If you do one or if you do 10, it's still $150. My proposal is if you're only doing clubs, you bring that down from 150 to 75, so half. And then the next one is the sports. These are the things that are a little more expensive. So that's why they have a higher price tag on it. So the sports, cheerleading, the musical, these are all things that are much more involved. They take a, they meet more, and there's more costs associated to it. We would drop the fee from 150 to 115. And I'd be perfectly happy with bringing that down to 100, if we wanted to do that. But I would just have to work out the numbers. What this represents is a $20,000 loss in revenue. So by doing these, by doing these changes here, instead of bringing in $60,000 in these fees, we were bringing in $40,000. If we wanted to look at making that 150, 100, it would bring it down a little bit more, which I'd be happy with. But I just wanted to make it a $20,000 reduction, so that's where that came from. What I figured is if we phased this out over three years, 20,000, 20,000, 20,000, maybe we eliminated it eventually, maybe we just phase it out, one quarter of, a third of it, bring it down to a third to the students. But I'd love to hear more about it from anybody that had other suggestions. And then that's it for the diginos and all that.
Thank you. So I think what I want to try and do is if we have numbers of public here, so why don't we start with that? If you have any questions that are specific to what's been presented, I'd like to ask the standard podium, name, address, even if you were to go ahead and say so. And you can direct your questions over to myself or Steve. The speaking at the board meeting still flies. So if you're here, want to ask a question, comment? Budget? Apparently everybody's fine with it, we can go down right now, yes? Alright, so real quick, oh.
You know I do.
I was hoping you'd.
Hi, from the District Committee again. First, thank you very much, Steve. I know there's a lot of work that goes into this, so everyone just pay attention. This looks great. And I hate to be a cynic, but this is all spending. And I was here last year for the budget, and it was a lot of cutting. And it was really tight. So I'm like, I'm confused as to why everything looks so rosy now in comparison to last year. I thought things were really, really tight in Denville. And we were like, you know, you know, we didn't have a lot in our pockets. I mean, based on the spending per people, we don't spend a lot of money. And, you know, can you make any comments to that?
Sure. I mean, one of the things I brought up is that this budget is increasing by, John, 3.6%? Something like that?
The tax.
The tax, the tax levy is going up 3.65. But because of the leveling off and actually increase in our property values district-wide, the budget impact isn't as great as it would be if you had like last year's circumstances. So when the town and the board was faced with a 20-plus million dollar tax.
Rateable loss.
Rateable loss. The board realized that even with no increase in the budget, I think you guys were going to be at something like a $70, am I right? $60 or $70 increase with no increase in the budget, meaning it's 0%. So what they did was they grew the budget only by .34 or 35. So this budget has a lot more of that money, basically making up for that money that wasn't in there last year.
Okay.
But there are cuts in here too.
Excusing, I'm really, I'm really not as financially savvy as you think I am. So when you say, when you say ratables, I'm hearing you say ratables and I'm thinking taxes. No. Because nothing, I'm getting my little thing in the mail from Denville Township, and I don't see my ratables going up and up and up. So I'm not following you.
So the ratables would be, John, tell me if I'm wrong here, but the ratables would be basically the evaluation of the town, right? So they have a number that comes in and says the town is worth X amount of dollars.
On your pink papers.
Yes.
So that value will decrease or decrease based off of certain circumstances. Two years ago.
The tax levy.
Right, no, no. You'll see the, the sets value.
$2.2 billion.
It's towards the bottom, maybe fifth line down or tip bottom.
The value of Denville.
It's essentially the value of Denville.
Oh, all the way down? Oh, I see, okay.
So two years ago or so, when the, the, I forgot, the.
A lot of it has to do with your commercial properties as well.
I was going to say, that must be commercial, because I think, didn't you all get like a notification from Denville? They're going to come around and do a new assessment on your properties for taxes. That's not factored in here.
It's more about.
The commercial.
It's commercial and, to the point locally, you talked about with people, either commercially or not, I've lost value due to the floods.
Yeah.
So I think between that and maybe a lot of the values were lost commercially due to floods. So that drove it down. So this helps us, this is an annualized number that's spread out, and that helps.
So in addition to that, there was, you know, the five or six properties by River View that went down. Franciscan Oaks, thanks Mike, had been a public entity, I'm sorry, had been a private entity at one point. And then they fought it with the tax assessor and they won. And they become a tax exempt status. So they didn't now put money into the tax base either, and they weren't counted toward these ratables. So you have factors of that which dropped the value of the town essentially, right? So now your tax dollars percentage as an individual homeowner actually sort of goes up as a result of that shrinking value of the town. When the value of the town goes up, essentially your dollar is going to go further for the school district.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Right.
Appreciate it.
You're talking about it.
Then, one comment I would have to say is the, that, the, was it the ESP?
ESIP.
ESIP that you suggested doing? Would that be, would it be wise to do that before you do some of these proposals for billing and grounds? Like the windows and, I don't know, gym doors and stuff like that? Instead of moving forward and purchasing?
Well, the windows is about ballistic film, which is about security and safety. ESIP is about energy savings.
But maybe there's something that merges the two, I'm just saying.
None of the things on here, they're either something that we need before ESIP or, but we've already.
You're already working on ESIP.
Yeah, ESIP is.
Just so you know, that's not in this budget cycle.
Oh, you guys are already doing it?
Yeah. It's a long process.
It's like a two-year process. So we're thinking about a year from now, we should be starting the actual work.
Okay, I didn't know what you said.
But yeah, we took that into consideration. I didn't want to do any HVAC work or anything along those lines. Unless it was an emergency, we can't have kids with no heat or something like that.
Right, right, okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Just name and address for the work again, please. Mount Pleasant Turnpike, Mr. Ford, charter schools, $50,000, is that per student?
No, it's total. We have four new students. So I think we have a total of about 10 now.
Yeah, I think that's right.
We had six, right? So four more kids are going to go to charter school. So we have to pay the tuition to the charter school. It's part of the state laws.
15,000 and change approximately.
Per pupil.
Okay. Didn't understand that, thank you. So when they leave our district, go to a charter school, you're still responsible for maintenance?
Yeah, we pay 90% of our per pupil cost to the other district.
About our choice, by the way.
We try not to. I mean, we want to raise the bar and do this so people don't send their kids out. There's competition.
Any other questions?
No.
I thought, could you hand, your hand raised? No?
King at Mount Pleasant Turnpike. Under the curriculum enhancement, the curriculum supervisor, would you be hiring someone? Or would you bring some, would it be someone from within the current staff who would be, you know, was basically elevated to that?
It could be, it could be. We would open it up as a new position to come in and bring our, right now, we're currently have a person from the outside of the district doing the evaluations. We'd like to bring, we want the person to be part of the team. Because that person's not part of the team. They just come do an observation, hand it off. It's not, it's not like cohesive. They don't, they're not part of the curriculum, they're not part of the district as a whole. They're outsourced. So we're paying for that now. This person would help us by bringing it in-house. We're also doing these walkthroughs, which we do. So each teacher has one walkthrough a month, plus their observation. So that's about 3,000 walkthroughs a year that we do. So we have a lot of stuff we're doing, we want to continue it, and this is part of the basic.
So essentially, there would be a savings if you had a curriculum supervisor, you'd be able to eliminate the outsourced then? Is that the point?
So if I cut this line out of the budget, say, say for some reason we said, you know what? This curriculum supervisor is out. this curriculum supervisor is out. I would, this line would not go from 100,000 to zero, it would go from 100,000 to 50,000, because we would still need somebody to do the evaluations, and we'd still need these couple of classes, the teacher was going to teach a couple of classes, too, that we would have to hire somebody to do instead.
Maybe that by.
Yeah, it could be.
Under buildings and grounds, projects to be determined for 300,000, did I miss what that included?
What, basically what we have is, it's called a long-range facilities plan. Our architect puts this together. It's for a pretty big fee, $25,000. You have to pay them, they put this, they put this together. But you pull projects off your long-range facilities plan, and this is, this is the things that we would do.
Prioritize.
So we would prioritize those projects. Remembering ESIP, though, because some of the, a lot of the stuff on the LRFP is ESIP-related, so we wouldn't do the ESIP stuff, and we would focus on other things. I'll give you some examples. Paving, we have, we have some broken up paving, some of our exterior masonry is, has been deteriorating. We have some issues with like brick pointing. We have, you know, a couple of other exterior, we have some flooring in the district that wouldn't have anything to do with ESIP, like some asbestos, and we have to replace like the carpeting in here, things like that, that would have to be replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? No others? So, that being said, I'd like to go through the board. Now, as a reminder, this is a preliminary budget. This is something that we'd like to try to vote on, on the ninth, if maybe we could push it up to the 16th with a special meeting. I think I'll just open it up to any of your comments in general. John, you might want to, kind of, get a key cage on your notepad there. Dino, we can start with you on your side.
Sure. We talked a lot about the special education increases, maybe also for the benefit of the public. John, can you give us an idea of what those, how much the costs have been increasing the last couple of years? I think we talked in the finance committee about percentages.
Budget to budget, in other words, when we budgeted last year to the budget this year, I can't give you percentages, and I was looking for my data, I didn't bring it with me, but it's $250,000 budget to budget increase with the, that includes two children aging out. So the increase there is obviously significant. We had to appropriate this year from our extraordinary aid, $70,000 just for OTPT therapies that weren't budgeted. So these are the type of things we're trying to put in the budget so those swings can hopefully be avoided. But we all know that it's very difficult to do that. Children become into the district, they will be in there classified, so it's difficult. That answers your question?
Yes. Okay, thanks. Any other comments? Dino? No, of course. John, go ahead.
Okay. We got it. Okay. As Dino said, we have more to discuss and fine tune on the budget. Okay, one thing I'd point out is a general point to discussion. We've had a ongoing trend of student reduction since I joined the board, probably minus 400 plus students since I came on board late 2005. Looking at the current counts, so we lost 41 students from 2013. We now have 35 classes with less than 20 students, and 12 classes are at 20, and pre-case excluded from those counts. So what I point out at the finance committee meetings is that, you know, we're running the business of education here. If you're running a regular business, you're losing customers and usually have to reduce costs or find a way to increase your revenue. So that's something we have to look at. We talked about the demographic study. I don't think there's a need to outsource that. I think that could be something that be done in-house. We have the expertise with our administrators, our principals. If you look some of the class sizes, we'd like to have, you know, we'd like to have smaller classes in our ideal world, but in New Jersey, we're not in an ideal world. Money is very tight. You read the newspapers like I do, the state doesn't have much money and is really running in a deficit. So I think that's something we have to look at, is our allocation of staff. I'd like your idea for curriculum supervisor. Perhaps we have somebody in-house so we could fill that position and not increase our head count with the ongoing trends. You saw the study, what we, that our costs are low per student compared to some of the other districts. This board's worked very hard to get the most bang for the buck for our students. Money doesn't always equate to a good education. If you look at the Abbott districts, the spending per student there and the results, it's not good. You know, a lot of variables and factors go in of that. So we really work very hard to get the, get good value for the money we spend on each student. And I think, you know, overall, since I joined the board, you know, we've done a good job on making sure our kids get a good education. And there's a lot of positives in the budget, too. The extracurricular fees being reduced. When they put that out, there is a second question in a budget. I was the only one to vote in no on that habit as a second question, because a lot of people I talked to in the sports community, they were incensed that that would be put out there as a second question, not included in the budget. And the money was there. So I'm glad to see we are making some strides to lower that for our parents. And extracurricular is a reason many kids, like myself, when I was a kid, would go to school. Extracurricular is a lot of fun, and we have a variety of extracurricular for the kids, too, besides sports. So that's a real good thing that we do as a district.
Thank you. Mariana?
Sure. I've put out some questions. I have real concerns, I guess to echo what Mr. Cass just said, in increasing head count while we have decreasing enrollment. We had a demographic study done and updated regularly while I've been on the board, and we're trending exactly where that demographic study showed. I don't agree with spending the money on a demographic study when we could probably pay a lot less to have the one we have updated. We just last year spent a lot of money to have this building, have a full study done of the room use and the schedule, so I'm not for spending that money. I'm definitely not for spending the money that you have in here on board meeting, tech support, no offense taken. We were told repeatedly when we put in the camera that there would be no cost to go on YouTube, so I don't understand why now there's going to be a cost to have it on YouTube. I think there's work to be done in this budget. I'm not comfortable having $300,000 worth of to-be-determined projects. I think the Buildings and Grounds Committee should meet and discuss and designate the funds, not just pick a random number and then see what fits. We should pick the projects that we believe priority-wise need to be done and then have that number in the budget. I'm disappointed to see the number in Buildings and Grounds. We carved out, even in really hard economic times, $700,000 in the last budget and previous budgets. Our long-range facility plan that was held up a moment ago has $24 million worth of work to be done on the buildings. I don't understand how, we wouldn't want to invest more in our buildings so that they don't end up crumbling around us, when we found a way, like was said, in budgets when everything was tight, we found a way to put more money in there for that. I think this budget needs to be looked at.
Mike?
So I know I've been digging through the binder, you guys can all see, we've all got these binders to go through, and I've been digging through it pretty closely and talking to a lot of the people up here and asking questions. I will say, Ms. Germin, that, you know, there are issues in this budget that are big expenses that, I know Steve mentioned a lot of things that are kind of look really great, that are heading in the right direction, and I think those are important, too. And I think he's trying to make it, point out the positives. But I'll give an example of employee benefits, positive 7.9%. Those are big, huge numbers that we have to figure out a way to, you know, on a 2% cap, quote-unquote, how you fit it in and how we kind of work around it, how we take that and then move it into other areas that we can kind of, you know, make the education better for the student. At the end of the day, every single item, when I look through it, the question I ask myself is, is this going to help the education of a student? I know Buildings and Grounds are a hard one to look at, but it does. I mean, because the environment the kids are in and the students are in, it's going to affect it. So I agree, there are things that we have to scrub through. I happen to agree with Ms. Lindsay in the aspect that I think that the Buildings and Grounds Committee should probably look at this really closely, that LRFP has a tremendous amount of information there. We really have to come up with a long-range plan for the district, not just on a year-to-year basis, let's look at what we can do, but what are we going to do in the next five, even 10 years out? And then constantly update on a year-to-year basis on what we see. But I am really happy to see a lot of the things that we're trying to do and move the district in the right direction. I think that there, a lot of the technology is really important, and I think a lot of that huge budget number will really have an impact on the students moving forward. So I'm happy to see a lot of those things that we're able to fit in. Obviously, it's kind of a unique year from a budget perspective in the ratables going up. It took me a while to figure out those numbers, too, because we talk about 2% caps, and what that really means is not 2% to what matters to me, because when I'm a taxpayer, what I care about is how much my bill going up or down. So I think when you look at this sheet, what I recommend people to look at is the tax impact percentage increase and the tax impact that is going to have on the budget, on the taxpayers, every single person in town. That, to me, is the most important number as a taxpayer, not sitting up here, if I was sitting out there, that's the number I'd be looking at, and how we're using the increased money that we're going to take, and that obviously is on the back a lot of it. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I look forward to kind of tweaking it as we go along, but we're getting into the beginning stages here, and I look forward to a lot of the conversations.
Okay, so to piggyback off of. In the last finance meeting, we made a conscious decision to reduce the cap reserve by over $100,000 to, from maintenance and cap reserves in order to decrease the risk in special ed lines, looking at history and current things that are active. You can't anticipate nobody moving into the district, and it's, when you put things in the cap reserve, I know, having worked with the previous committee, we have, like, we were able to get save over a few years and squirrel away and finally save enough to do the roof on River View without actually needing a second question. So the intent is to put more in, maybe by the year end. We would like to have more in the cap reserve. The problem is it locks you in to capital projects where, so at year end, we would probably have some monies left that we could put back into the reserve. At this point, there's like unknowns for state aid, there's unknowns for the, we have a contract that expired. So we're hopeful, we're really trying to do, make some fundamental changes in the language that'll benefit the kids. And so you have to take a, like, an approach that has some wiggle room there, you know, because we don't know the final outcome. So, that being said, I'm pretty conscious about wanting to put more in cap reserve, but it does lock you in to capital projects. And we felt like just looking at, weighing the decision, it would be best served in the mainline for this particular 12-month cycle. So, I don't know if that helps. I mean, we could talk more in the meeting this week. When do we get the aid, Mr. Dino?
I'm hoping by Thursday. It's 48 hours after the governor's address, which is Tuesday. Traditionally, they hold it, they release it at 47 hours and 35 minutes. No, they don't give you a hint.
Well, I mean, he might say no. No doubt.
Well, yes, and it, yes, yes. You know, to, just to piggyback on that, I mean, that's important. Our tuition rate has to be certified for the charter schools, which will affect what we budget for the charter schools. That service aid will all come through the end of this week, and then hopefully we'll be able to meet, we'll meet with Buildings and Grounds and determine those projects and hopefully finalize the budget.
All right, I mean, like, to just reiterate, it is the initial submission for county review. Sometimes they find things they're not happy with, not as much, nothing's set concrete. But overall, I'm pretty happy with what, you know, and it's because of the finding the moment and the favorable ratables that it, overall, it looks like decent, you know? That's all.
So I think there's a couple of things, I think, to make note of. I think, number one, the idea that this is obviously preliminary. I think it does look rosy, probably because of paper, and all that. You know, the district, as usual, is always tight. You know, you see a list of $50,000 worth of stuff here that is being done, but in reality, we have $24 million of things that need to be done. So it's not even a chip. A couple of things that, you know, jumped out at me when I first saw the budget numbers come through, and I had asked for, John, to give me a couple more numbers that I think are important to hear. Over the last four or five, I think it's maybe the last five years or so, the lowest increase in the average household taxes was, I think, $60. And this is coming in at $66. I thought it was $67, but $66, which is, you know, is an increase, of course. But I think the most important thing that really jumped out at me was that last year, and you're going to have to follow me for a minute here, so last year, for every dollar that the average household paid in increased taxes, so it went up $85, right, for every dollar it went up, the district saw another $900 in revenue, right? So, I mean, $1, $900. This year, if I did write my math, my son's smarter than I am, but the, for every dollar that the district is getting, or that you're paying in the average household tax increase, the district is seeing almost $7,700. So from $900 for $1 last year to $7,700 now this year, it's because the ratables have gone up and your tax dollars have gone further. And ultimately, what that means is that, as a taxpayer, which we all are, we're getting more value for our dollar, right? We're getting more bang for the buck. The district is seeing more, or is going to have the ability to do more with less impact to the, to the public. And as a matter of fact, the numbers are right there. The impact to the, to the average household last year, which this board, for the most part, voted for, was at 2.3%. And the district saw a minimal increase in its tax revenue, or tax increase, it was a, or budget increase, excuse me, 0.3, a third of a percent high. You know, this year, we're going to exceed the 2% to make up for that bank cap, but the impact is actually going to be less. The impact is less than 2%, a little over 1 and 3/4% increase. So I think that's an important thing. And the one thing I agree with that the board has talked about, I think countless times over the past couple of weeks via email or in person, is certainly this idea of how much we're spending in Buildings and Grounds. You know, right now, even excluding the demographer, it's something around $500,000 that we're spending, and traditionally, we've been higher than that. I think that, you know, one of the important things, if we want to get up to $700,000 is to find $200,000. You know, we have a finite amount of money, it's fairly locked in. So, you know, if we don't want to put, you know, if we don't want to do textbooks, if we don't want to have a curriculum supervisor, if we don't want to lease a bus or maintenance vehicles, if we don't want to be part of sustainable jersey or have an eighth grade bio class, if we want to reduce head count, we're going to have to figure it out if you want to find another $10,000. And I think it's probably not as simple as I should have said it, but it's, the reality is, again, you know, we can't have an endless supply of money, and we can adjust and make the changes that we need to make, but ultimately, we have to make tough decisions. If you want to spend more money here, you have to spend less money there, and that's what it comes down to. So that all being said, you know, essentially, this is the preliminary budget. Again, I think Barb alluded to the fact that there's going to be, I think, two more budget meetings, right?
Yes. Do you have one?
Before the ninth. In the meantime, John, as you get updates and as there's adjustments, if you could send those out to the board, and the updates to the binder. I know B and G's can be a minute meeting, I think personnel's can be meeting before the ninth as well.
I was going to say, I requested that numbers be looked at, since most of the basis for this curriculum supervisor that was spoken about tonight was about evaluations. We increased and started outsourcing our evaluations only when the new teacher evaluation system went in, and tenured staff, which makes up, I would have to guess, at least 3/4 of our staff, increased the amount of evaluations per teacher that had to happen. We didn't have enough administration to do that. We went after a waiver this year to decrease the number of evaluations being done and instead in place do walkthroughs. So I think we need to look at it closely, how many evaluations actually we need to have happen, and if we still need. happen, and if we still need, even if we didn't create this position, to outsource some.
That's fair. You know, so the question wouldn't necessarily just be the $50,000, which would be the, sort of, the net increase for the supervisor, but you're saying that we may not need another $50,000 to actually outsource evaluations in general?
Well, I think we need to look at it. When we did away with that whole one evaluation per staff member of a tenured staff, when that, I think it's a safe estimate to say 3/4 of our staff is tenured. That's a lot of evaluations that we wiped away. I think we need to look at it. I don't know what the two classes are, it sounds like we don't know what the two classes are, that we need to be taught by this person also. It's, it's hard for me to understand how we could add a whole nother layer of administration. First of all, the state, you know, we had to fight with the state in order to get an assistant superintendent. I don't understand how we think with declining enrollment, we need another layer of administration. It just, it makes no sense to me.
That's fair.
The only, I mean, the only thing I can say is that, one thing is, there's about 135 less observations. If we get the waiver, which we didn't get yet, but we're pretty comfortable getting, it's gonna be about 135 less, but on top, by removing the 135, we are committing to doing the one walkthrough per teacher per month, which comes out somewhere in the range of, it's probably more like 2,000 walkthroughs. So we're gonna, if we move 135 regular observations, which take a lot longer, but we're gonna replace it with these 2,000 walkthroughs, which, you know, what we're saying is, number one, I'd like to not outsource the evaluation of our staff. I think, I think the evaluation of staff is, the evaluation and the support of staff, hiring, training, you know?
I don't disagree with that. I fought against outsourcing our staff evaluations when we had to do it. I did.
I'm good with answering your question, but just let me finish on a second. So if you have, if you're outsourcing, the, the, right now, if you're outsourcing any of the evaluation of your staff, I, my personal feeling, again, this is my personal recommendation, is that, that one of the most important things we would do, we're not doing with our own people. I had a big problem with that. I would like to see us do a better job, too, not just an adequate job or just whatever's required by the state, but actually a better job, because, like I said, I mean, what's more important to us, other than safety and security of our kids? This is not, we don't create anything, we don't make anything, we don't sell anything. What we do is we hire good people, and we put them in front of our kids to teach them the best they possibly can. So, so hiring, supporting, developing, evaluating staff, to me, is our number two most important thing we do after keeping kids safe and secure. So for us to outsource that in any way, or to shortchange it, or to do less than any of that in any way, to me, is a mistake. What I wanna do is actually do a better job of that and, and really drive this place forward, because, you know, we spend a lot of time on this, and this is, this is a really important, this is the most important thing that I can say that we can do. This has the most impact on our kids, is, is our staff.
I wouldn't disagree with you. I just said we need to look at the numbers.
No, yeah. Look, and I, right now, because this is a personnel matter, I wouldn't speak about what classes are teaching.
That's fine, I requested the numbers, I didn't request it in public.
What I'm saying is, because it's a personnel matter, I wouldn't speak about it in a public meeting, but I'd be, eventually you will, it's just not at that point. So in a personnel meeting, I'd be happy to explain the, you know, the classes and all that other stuff.
So, the, so like I said, we know we're gonna have a couple more committee meetings in advance. Hopefully, each category, each committee could sort of tackle the outstanding issues or the fine tuning, as Mike said, for each particular area. Hopefully, we'll come back on March 9th and have something that is, I guess, palatable to the entire board so that we can move forward with submitting an preliminary budget to the, to the county. If not, releasing a notice for a special meeting on the 16th, at which point, we will basically have to hash out something to get to the county. In the meantime, though, this is our preliminary budget. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Mr. Forte, you have a copy of it there. And that moves us forward in our meeting agenda. And so, to the actual part of the business that we're here for. So you're more than welcome to stay, obviously. The presentation part of it is over, the fun part is probably over as well. So let's move to superintendent's comments.
Superintendent's comments. So today, we had a couple of fun things happening. I don't know if you're gonna go over this, but I figured I'll go over it. You could cut it out, whatever it is, you go over it. You, right. We had, um...
I'm gonna say, I won't say anything.
One of our buses broke down, probably a transmission, most likely. We did get the kids off the bus and had a different bus. We had, the other day, when I, out in front of my house, which is weird, just happened to be there, I saw one of our buses stopped in the middle of the binder's ad, and I'm like, why is that bus stopping there? So I don't know about my business, I look back again, and I realize it's just stuck there, because, because for Ash Wednesday, I think there is, people parked with their tail out into the street, and the bus couldn't get by. So I helped, tried to help them get out, and we, whatever, finally, we got the person out, but it was, I had a good talk with the cops, with the police, and see if we could help fix that, but it's, it was, it was definitely a weird situation. So we had a bus breakdown today, we had another bus issue that happened. We had heating problem at Lakeview. We had, we actually had one of our rooms, because the heat went off in the room, the coil, which is filled with water, froze, and not burst, but broke, so we leaked water into the room. So we had to close the room. This is something you're gonna see soon, so we might as well bring it up, because I think it's very important. We don't have any type of isolation valves, meaning we have to shut the heat off the entire section of the building, and this particular section was 2/3 of the building. So we'd like to try to put some isolation valves in, maybe we can shut off a half a hallway or something like that, go down three, four classes instead of, you know, in Lakeview, we pretty much would've had to displace probably, out of 600 kids, or six or 700 kids, we would have to displace probably around 400 of them. So we were, had a real hard time conducting business. We were able to get the thing back up and running, put some, some isolation valves on. John's gonna work on getting some quotes for that. That's, that's probably gonna be one of the $300,000 TPD projects that we do, some, to do some kind of isolation valves. We also now have isolation valves for our freshwater. So what that means is if, say, a sink breaks in one of the rooms and we need to replace it, in Riverview, we would have to shut down almost the whole school, meaning we'd need no toilets, we'd need nothing, so we wouldn't be able to conduct business. If you have a isolation valve, you could shut it down for a hallway, and kids can use the other bathroom for a day, which wouldn't be the end of the world. But you can't operate the school with no bathrooms all day. So these are areas we wanna do, and these are, these aren't things that happen every day, right? You don't hear about this every day, but when it does, we should be able to be more prepared than we are. We also have, what I think is good news, about our light path contract. We were able to get that credit that I was speaking to you about, not in one lump sum, but the, the light path contractor's gonna take off about $800 per month over the next three years, so we'll, we'll see those savings. We also, because of our co-op, we're gonna save another approximately $1,200 a month, right, John? $1,344 a month. So we, those are two pretty big areas of savings. That, if, if, if the board wants to sharpen the pencil and not reallocate that money, pull it out of the budget, that would be something, that would be a solution. Or what we could do is just move the money into and do another, which is another area we can do some projects that can come right from what we have budgeted for light path. So that's, those are all options. So I'm gonna keep my comments brief today, since I spoke so much today.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
John, you got some comments for us?
No, I don't.
So I'm going to ask that we go into a quick executive session. We have our attorney here, we have to go over a couple things in executive session. So Barb, if you don't mind, moving this.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Move to convenia executive session in accordance to Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss legal issues. Minutes of the session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? All right, we are moving to executive session. We will be coming out and voting for the agenda, so if you wanna wait outside, you're more than welcome. If not, it's almost time to go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
So it is 10:39 by my clock, by rise clock, and we are now back into the public portion. Thank you all for staying and dealing with us. Mr. Cass, you suggested it. I'm gonna give you the opportunity to continue with our agenda.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry. Before you do that, I'd like to open for public session is 10:40. Seeing the public, I'd like to close for public session that is 10:40. And Mr. Cass, you would?
Yeah, if nobody objects, I'd like to move the entire agenda as a walk, maybe give everybody just a minute if they wanna peruse it to see if there's anything that...
I have to stay...
Wait, wait, before you say anything, before you say anything, is there a second for that?
Second.
So Mike, I'm sorry, Mary, I...
You need to table policy and regulation 5600, since it wasn't pulled off the agenda.
So that is a...
I will amend the motion.
Mike, you accept that as well?
Accept.
All right, so that...
That was the plan, because we already did it once, we didn't wanna pull it off.
So policy, regulation 5600 is pulled out of the block that we'll be voting for, that Mr. Cass had moved. Questions, comments, there's, as typical, the minutes from the previous meetings, there are, there are typical payments to teachers for chaperoning and for extra work that they have done throughout the course of the, I guess, month. There is also the calendar, which I think you just sent through the revised one, which I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at, they just came through later on this afternoon, right?
It's in your, John, I don't know if we have...
Yeah, I heard it in the mail.
There was a change for the part, but I don't remember which the days were.
You remember, we moved spring break till April 4th, and removed the conferences to the end of March, and I got approval from the, from the, from the union to have it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, instead of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
So that's an improvement there. So big changes from the previous one is the spring break being moved back to April 4th to the 8th, and the back-to-school night, not back-to-school night, the conferences, the March 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 3rd.
I'm just wondering, okay. So people, no, just so people know, you now, no, I have the wrong one here, right?
No, you did, right, what? It used to be here.
Okay. So, oh, we will have to tie it up, okay, that's...
And this is to align because the high school part dates came out, right?
Correct.
For next year, correct?
Yes, and the high school voted in their change tonight.
So that may assume that we will have park next year, by the way.
I heard from one of the board members that they voted it in tonight.
So in addition to that, is the settlement, which we spoke of in the executive session. There are some budget transfers, which are typical as well.
Should we pull the, make another amendment to my motion to pull the settlement out as a separate vote?
If you happen to vote on that separately, you can, you can call out that separate vote. Is that okay to you, John?
Yes, that's fine, yes.
So if there's something throughout the agenda that you are choosing to vote no on, make note of it during your vote. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
So the finance?
I think that number four on their instruction program.
Number four, yeah, I remember from the instruction program.
Okay, so I'm gonna pull a roll?
Yep, please.
Pulling four, okay.
No?
No?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes, with the exception of 3C, the minutes from January 12th, I'll abstain on those.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, except I am voting on the finance, motion number two. No on check 64954, 64988, 65014, 65071, and I will abstain on check number 65094.
Lou, John?
I'm gonna ask, if you could just read that back, ooh, 6, 64954.
It's the same list I sent you earlier.
Okay, that's right, you did, that's fine.
Here.
I don't need it, that's okay.
There it is.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Cass?
I'll vote yes on everything except for the instruction of program number four. I am voting no on that.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. Okay, since we've gotten that part out of the way, the business part, which we normally take a few hours to do, we just did it in a couple minutes, it's great. We will move to the, good as a cause, committee reports, anything from the committees? I know we have committee meetings coming up, I would expect that our next meeting, we should have committee reports outside of what we've discussed already. Yes, no, go ahead. So correspondence, not any discussion points, for the vet office, we spoke about that today, trailers, anything outside of what we just talked about?
Nope.
Two-tier busing, we're still planning on discussing that further, yeah?
Two-tier busing is possibly gonna be put on hold for a year, but we're still restating it.
You wanna give us some color on that?
Yes. I'll be right back. I wanna give you color. Well, well, we're, we're, we're spending a lot of time making sure that we're doing it right, and I wanna, if I don't feel comfortable with it, making sure it's ready to go and perfect, the people we have, and the whole situations we have in place, then we're gonna put it on hold for sure.
Good. The only comment on that, then, is in the budget, I thought I saw something that we could potentially hold off on a bus lease, depending on the, on the tier. So we're gonna have to pull the trigger on a bus lease and then have an extra bus?
Well, if we do tier-tier busing, we probably have less buses possible, but what we would do, we already talked about it, what we would do is we'd probably start picking up kids that, that are going, that were spending money for busing services for special ed, close routes, we would, instead of, instead of actually cutting something, we'd probably bring it back in-house, and instead of saving 20 grand in the cut, we might say 40 grand and doing it ourselves, that's what we're looking at.
Okay. There's also some buses that are gonna be phasing out over the next four or five years, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe not pick that down the next...
Six years, we, no, in four years, I think six are phasing out, right?
That's correct.
That's a problem, six in one year.
All right, so that is...
And is that because the buses are now able to be kept longer, is that what we're hitting? They never hit six before.
Right.
No, it's not 15.
Isn't it 15 now?
Yeah, it's 14.
Oh, I thought it was 12. But I mean, it used to be, they moved it from, okay, I know they gave us a couple extra years, which is probably why...
Yeah.
It was just only a few years ago, they changed it.
Yeah, but you must've had them all at the same time.
Yeah, we must've always.
You must've had a block of six, where you must've just bought six buses, or financed, financed six buses, just that they, instead of going offline in 12 years, they're gonna go offline in 14.
Yeah, it was, Mr. Martens, right, liked it that way, and he liked to finance them over, lease financing, lease purchase, or whatever he used to call it, which confused everyone. I just realized, we voted on the, and actually, I don't even know where are we, were committee reports? We just voted on the HIB report that we haven't actually heard yet, but you're gonna do that in the executive session.
Any of the ones you've already, any of the ones that you...
Oh, that's the one he presented.
Anything that you vote on has always, has already been approved by them.
So there is gonna be something we'll talk about in the executive session, but what we just voted on was what we talked about in the last minutes, right?
Okay, thank you.
Got it. Check, check, check. All right, so that was two-tier busing.
So I guess I have another, is that where you are?
Other.
As the official liaison to the CPAC, I'll let you know that...
Where'd she go?
That they met, was that last week? That was last week, right, seems like a lifetime ago. They met last week, they had a very nice, informative meeting with the district and the parents collaborating to put on a presentation, and I know she came out tonight because she wanted to say something to all of us, but, I mean, it was a nice night, and they're trying to get up and running on a monthly basis.
That's good.
And I, I happened to, and I mentioned this to Dave already, the, going through a lot of old board paperwork and filing it into the correct files and shredders.
Circular.
Yeah, the circular file and the shredder. And I happened to come across from when our last CPAC, and I don't know where I put the paper now, was up and running, and I've been struggling with this as a person who's gone to all the CPAC meetings, what the feedback loop is and how it should be reported out, and they decided on monthly coming to our meetings, and you, Dave, encouraged her to do so and everything. But back then, there was actually a feedback loop that we got a, a letter from the superintendent based on what the director of special services said came out of the meetings. So I wonder if there's a way to get the two sides to connect. I know what we hear at the meeting, but I don't know, like, if I, I don't even know where to look in this budget to find out. Was it budgeted for the books and all that were said in that meeting, that, yeah, they get budgeted through special ed? Is there in the budget, you know, funds in this budget? I haven't looked to the level to know for the teacher training that's being talked about there.
There's a three books per school, I think that would be the...
Yeah, that's $225, but I mean, I don't know how to know if the loop's actually closing, you know what I mean?
That's a good point. So maybe you can follow back up with Larry to see if he's followed up on some of those books. The, it's a three-set binder, or not binders, there are three sets of books per school.
What was the, this thing, I heard you talking about it, is there names of it?
She spoke about it. There are three books, they give all the information to liar, but that's what I'm saying, as a board from the other side, can we get a, you know, something to know that...
Close the loop.
Close the loop, that something's, the whole point, as far as I can tell, of starting up a CPAC, other than the fact that the state's requiring it of us, is to make sure that there's like a communication loop.
Well, what you're describing is not necessarily something that's unique to that exactly, although your point is well taken, right? It's always that sort of thing, when, you know, when it's spoken about, and I'll take care of that, we just wanna make sure that sort, that sort of thing's taken care of. In this particular case, Larry had said that he's gonna try to, and his budget this year is gonna put in...
Well, if he can't find $225 for books and budget, that's kinda scary.
That's one of my...
But, um, no. But I mean, there was also talking about, you know, in it, there, it was in the line item there for people who were in the audience, you know, is there staff development training that there being, that's one of the key things that they've spoken about at every meeting.
Continue with staff education training.
Correct.
So maybe we can just get some more details on that, and maybe a quick update next meeting or something like that.
What we could do too is, um, have, have a section on each IMP agenda that has to do with special ed.
Okay.
Include that in next, but whatever topics are, like, is updated, basically.
Fine, and that can be where the feedback loop comes from, that's fine, I just, I wanna somehow connect.
Well, if you could do that, and then in the committee report, you can throw that back into the committee report, that'd be perfect.
Yeah.
I mean, either that, which would probably be better, because that would be public, because somebody would report it, or I would just throw it in by Friday.
Well, it's been public sheets, you know...
No, the, the loop closing part, no.
Yeah. That would be perfect.
What I'll, what I'll do is I'll talk to Larry about that each IMP, there should be something about special ed, okay?
So, all right, I'm sorry.
And that would be good, especially if people realize that, because that was one of their concerns, that when they looked here, there is no section on the agenda.
Well, they were talking about, not just the section, the one committee.
And I neglected to say at that meeting, because I was waiting my turn to talk, and believe it or not, forgot, that it is actually been tucked in in the past, it is instruction of students, so it is under instruction and program, it doesn't need its own separate section.
No taken.
Thank you.
Anything else? Or some other?
Dave, I've got a couple quick things, real quick. As the foundation of Denville leaves on a couple things, and Steve corrected me at the beginning of the meeting that, or before the meeting, that there was a bunch of equipment that was donated from the foundation, but for edification, I didn't realize it, I may have missed it at one point. Um, so they donated 10 LCD projectors to Valley View, one 3D printer to Lakeview, one 3D printer to Riverview, a poster printer to Lakeview, and a poster printer to Riverview. They've been very appreciative of working with Mr. Forte, um, on ensuring that what they're donating is, uh, in line with what, uh, we as a district need and the vision we see moving forward, so they appreciate that. And, um, last thing from the foundation was their casino night is coming up on March 21st, that's their, uh, spring big fundraiser, um, good time for anybody who is interested in coming out.
I was, I was there last year, Mike, you were there, I think, actually, all of us, you were there.
I'm, yep, I missed one of theirs.
Pretty sure, uh, Carlos was there, I think last year. Forte was there.
Well, I was there.
Yeah.
So it's March 21st, the Monday?
March 21st.
Gone, I'm going the wrong year.
No, it's a Saturday.
I'm in the wrong year, that's why I'm like, why isn't it on the calendar?
Monday night, those people.
They usually do it on a Monday night.
No, golf is Monday night.
On the golf is Monday night.
Monday, Monday night, yeah.
Um, and one more thing off topic of the foundation, but, uh, it reminded me when, and Steve brought up, uh, on the calendar, reporting to the public for the budget, it's something that I've spoken to Dave about quite a bit, is just our interaction with the public as far as getting out and giving reports, I think it's something that I would suggest we do more often. Um, I can speak for, uh, when I kinda, uh, did my campaign and running, people were really appreciative of hearing about what's going on with the district, not just the budget. Budget's obviously important, but I don't know if we wanna do it separately, we can also, we got a discussion offline exactly how to do it, but I think it's important for us to get out to, um, and I know it said on the, on the, uh, schedule, to the town and to the seniors, there's a lot more other groups out there that are interested in hearing about what's going on in the schools, um, that were very appreciative of getting out and, and hearing from us. So, it's something that I'd like to see us as an initiative kinda moving forward with and, and looking at options for, so...
Yeah, so that, that was a really good point that Mike and I talked about. So, we've always done the thing where we've gone to different groups, uh, not just, uh, town, seniors, but also some other groups and spoke to them about our budget, and it was almost exclusively to the budget. I think, Mike, um, part of what you talked about was not just that exactly, but also just maybe, I don't know if it's quarterly or whatever sort of updates, the idea of what, you know, we're doing in the schools, you talked about some of the groups you had visited, and how they're appreciative of not just hearing about the dollars and cents so much as the accomplishments and the things like that, and that's not necessarily something that's gonna be on your table. But, you know, as we sort of move forward as a, as a board, um, you know, one of the things that I wanted to bring up, and this is a good segue for me, is that one of our goals is to sort of evaluate or reevaluate our committee structure. Um, in addition to that, in terms of an outreach, I think that might be a good sort of playoff of one another, from the committees and, and areas that we're involved at, and, and how we go about delivering messaging to the town outside of the, the normal track. So, something to think about as we go for, uh, forward, uh, again, it is part of the committee, or the, part of the budget presentations as it's going out, but, you know, maybe, Mike, you and I can sort of talk through some of the things that you talked about earlier, maybe a little more formally, and have a good plan for, really, each of us to have the opportunity to go out to some of these secondary groups or these other groups that are out there, and give them a sense of what's happening within the district, outside of just the dollars and cents part, which, I think, like you said, they'd be happy to hear about.
So you're thinking more along the lines of, well, I guess we have discontinued the Pathfinder, where we sent out information quarterly to every household through their mailbox, to try and instead hit by board members, not administration necessarily?
I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be one or the other. I think it's, I think the point is to, you know, there's a lot of these groups that are out there that meet on a fairly regular basis that, you know, we could probably hit outside of, you know, the PTAs and things like that, they would like to hear what's going on also. And it, and actually, it may, I don't know if it would be more effective or not from the Pathfinder, but, you know, at the, at the very least, you have a, a sitting audience